Get started.
Let's begin to declare the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag that was raised ago and the zip symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
And today's indication is by Commissioner McCutcheon.
Our Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here this day and grateful that we've got some relief from the heat. We are grateful to be able to serve thee in the capacities which thou has put us in and we pray that we would do as thou would have us do. We are grateful for thy son, Jesus Christ, and for his sacrifice and him being raised upon the cross that we may also live again. We thank thee for being able to call ourselves like children here upon the earth and we pray that thy inspiration and guidance may be with us always. Father, we're mindful of the tragedy in Odessa and recently El Paso. We pray for those families, we pray for the fallen, and we pray that they may have faith and be able to go on and learn from these things, learn what thou would have us, learn what thou would have us learn. We pray that thou would help us be prepared and be able to be full of faith and rely on thy healing power when such tragedies happen. We pray for the leaders of our country, pray for our president, and we pray that they would make the decisions that thou would have them make that would help maintain the freedoms that thou has blessed us with. We pray that thou would please be with our troops, please be with their families, and we thank thee for their service and know that what we enjoy comes through their sacrifice. We thank you all for these things and do so in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
What if I got the short chair?
Last one.
You got the shorty chair.
I can't get this, but it's like me now.
I think the department has got together.
Oh, that would be, uh.
I only texted Stephen.
Take it off and give it the job.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the first item on the agenda is public comments and announcements. Is there any public comments and announcements this morning? Seeing none, we will move into item number two, bid awards. The first one is IFB nineteen oh two water services for Eddie County. So for this IFB, the water services for Eddie County, it was solicited on August eighth, twenty nineteen. Seal bids were open on the twenty-third of August, and we did receive four bids from Alphadel, Anderson Investments, Select Energy Services, and J and J Farms. And being that all of them were deemed responsive, we are recommending to award all four.
Any questions?
Questions, questions.
Seeing no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve bid award IFB nineteen dash oh two water services for Eddie County to all four applicants. Do I need to mention them by name or does it matter?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is IFB nineteen oh three. This is on here for FYI only to let the commissioners know that we did not receive any sealed bids for this IFB. We did solicit this on August ninth and they were scheduled to be open on August twenty-third, however, we did not receive any. So we will more than likely go out again for this IFB. Next on the agenda, we will actually circle back around to the ten AM Brianwell remediation updates. We'll come back to that at ten AM. Moving to the trailing agenda, the first item is commission meeting minutes for August twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Does anyone have any questions or anything they need to discuss? No? With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes for August twentieth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, next on the agenda is Treasury report for July twenty nineteen. This was distributed prior, so this is FYI only unless there are any questions.
Do you not have any questions?
Next item is July twenty nineteen revenue report. So for the July twenty nineteen revenue reports for gross receipts tax, our monthly target goal is one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And for the month of July, we collected one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three dollars for gross receipts. For oil and gas, for production and, production equipment and royalties altogether, our monthly target is one point five million. For the month of July, we collected two million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. Now we'll stand for any other questions if you have any.
Any questions?
No, sir.
I like the number.
We're not changing it again.
We're gonna have to buy you a Snickers.
All right, seeing no questions, we'll move, see a motion to approve July twenty nineteen revenue report as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Next item is budget versus actual July twenty nineteen. So as you all are aware, the budgeted revenue for this fiscal year, starting off, is ninety-seven million, six hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight. Out of that, we have collected twenty-three point six million in revenue. Our budgeted expense for this fiscal year right now is a hundred and nine point eight million dollars. And out of that, we have expensed nineteen point four million dollars. The biggest portion of both of those is fifteen million dollars transfer from general fund. So general fund holds a fifteen million dollar expense, and the other funds receiving that have collected that. So that's the biggest amount out of that twenty-three million and that nineteen million that you see there on the first page. For general fund, for revenue, we're right on target, collecting eight percent so far. For expenses for general funds, we are quite a bit over at twenty-seven point seven five, but again, we transferred fifteen million dollars out of general funds, so it's always skewed for the first few months because of that huge transfer that we transfer out. There's only a couple departments that were a little bit over, one being IT. The biggest reason for that is because they did budget to buy much of computers this year, and they've already expensed that. So that was one of their biggest expenses so far. For the road department revenue, they've collected about eighty-four percent, but obviously, again, nine million dollars of that was transfers in from general fund. For their expenses, they've collect, they've expensed about four percent of their budget, expensing four hundred and one thousand dollars. So I will stand for any other questions if you have any.
Questions? None of you question?
Done for me.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll look to approve, or make a motion to approve budget versus actual July twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item on the agenda is approved safety net care pool certification of public funds for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, first quarter. Veronica.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So it's that time for first quarter, safety net care pool, public funds.
Any questions?
Are you, or is he?
There's no options.
Yeah.
Great. With no questions, we'll look for a motion to approve safety net care pool certification of public funds for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, first quarter.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, have a second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Commissioner Wood. Right.
Yeah.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Veronica.
Mr. Chairman, next item is change position title of deputy assessor, Gemma.
Good morning, commissioners. We have two positions that are called deputy assessors in our office, but really they're the front people who handle all the clerk duties. So I think the deputy assessor position is kind of misleading, so I'd like to really change that title to what they actually are doing. And also, the field appraiser position is actually our business personal property person. And so it's just clean up. No change in pay, no change in anything other than just fine. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Questions?
No. Seeing no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the change, change, changing of the position title of deputy assessor. Guess that'll work.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Has a second?
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. No further discussion, please call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Thank you, Gemma.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion and direction on adding an additional holiday to the twenty nineteen holiday schedule. Mr. Chairman, so this item was put on, the clerk's office has requested this. Back when we were going through the Easter holiday, the clerk's office had decided to close their office and based on their schedule, they're technically on a ten-hour working schedule. However, they're open five days a week, not four days a week, such as the road department. Because that decision was made to close the office, their employees were not entitled to that holiday because it was the choice to actually close that. So she, Robin was wanting to bring this back because that same issue, I guess, is going to be brought back up for the Thanksgiving holiday. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background, or I guess a summary of what we've been doing with the holiday schedule when we went to four tens and then we went back to eight to five. Back in twenty seventeen, there wasn't equal amount of holidays as far as the eight-hour schedule and the ten-hour schedule. Everybody had fifteen holidays. When that was switched, when we did the R nineteen seventeen and the R nineteen twenty-five resolution, the four-ten schedule actually dropped some holidays. So right now, as it stands, if you work in eight to five, you have fifteen holidays, which equal out to fourteen full days. Around the four-ten, you have twelve holidays, which equal out to the twelve full holidays. However, in hour-wise, if you remember when we approved this, the tens and the twelves obviously get more hours overall. They don't get holidays, more holidays, but the hours equal out more. The eight, the eight to five schedule, they get a hundred and twelve holiday hours, four-ten's get a hundred and twenty hours, and then the twelves get a hundred and forty-four hours. Now, we did approve resolution, I believe, R nineteen twenty-six because there was going to be, I guess, kind of a discrepancy in the hours if you worked a Monday and the holiday fell on that Monday. Or if, I mean, if you worked Tuesday through Friday and that holiday fell on a Monday, or vice versa, if the holiday fell on a Friday and you worked Monday through Thursday. So R nineteen twenty-six basically says if the designated holiday falls on Monday, employees scheduled to work Tuesday through Friday will observe the holiday on the Tuesday. And then vice versa, if the designated holiday falls on a Friday, employees scheduled to work Monday through Thursday will observe the holiday on the Thursday prior to the designated holiday. So that kind of remedied that issue for that. So with all that being said, what it kind of comes down to is approving an additional holiday. The clerk's office and the sheriff's office, and I believe some of the detention, are on the alternative, if you want to call it, ten-hour, but they're open five days a week. Rather than the road department, they're open four days a week, ten-hour schedule. The sheriff isn't here. I don't know what he has been doing with these holidays on a Friday or a Monday. But like I said, the resolution, R nineteen twenty-six, basically lets you know if the holiday falls here, you observe it here. So we brought this back for discussion and direction because if you guys decide to move forward with this, we would have to bring back the holiday schedule and add this to the holiday schedule and create the four-ten with alternative schedules such as the clerks and the sheriff's office work, the five days a week.
Questions?
I don't have any. I'm fine with it.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what to do. I think working on Friday of Thanksgiving is probably not a good deal. I'm not real sure, not real sure how to do it. So we've got, we've got basically the eight to fives that have fourteen holidays, and then we've got...
Well, they have fifteen holidays, but they total off fourteen full days.
They total, uh, fourteen full days, okay. And then we have twelve and twelve, basically, because, and that's basically due to the Monday, Friday, holiday.
And really, the only difference between the eight fives and the tens and the twelves is the eights are getting half a day for Good Friday, half a day Thanksgiving, and then the extra day for Thanksgiving, whereas the tens only get Thursday off. Those are your differences in the holidays.
Okay, so it's the two half-a-days, it's the Wednesday and the, and the Friday for Good Friday.
Yeah.
Uh, look, let me think about it a little bit. I, I saw this on there, but, I mean, working Black Friday is, I mean, that, that doesn't really make much sense to me because everybody's gone or has family coming in. That just doesn't make much sense, but I'm not real sure what to do about it, so I'm gonna hold my discussion.
I'm good with changing it, going back to like it was. I'm good with it.
I, I kind of like, Commissioner McCutcheon, I, I think it's a waste of time for people to come in after a Thursday when they have family in and, and stuff, so. I would be certainly on the ready. I'd be in favor of taking Fridays off. I just...
That's not the discussion, is it?
Well, if you guys, if that's the direction you guys would want to go, what we would do is bring back the holiday schedule, the resolution. We would add an additional holiday schedule because it would be an additional one. It wouldn't be off the four-ten's, it would be the five-ten's. And we would give that holiday because you wouldn't be awarding the holiday, like, to the road department who's already off on that Friday. You would be awarding it to the people who work that Friday, which would be the clerks and the sheriffs. And I believe, Rod and you, you have some that are on the alternative five-ten's, right? No, you don't?
Five-ten?
Right. Just on the four-ten's? Okay, so it'd just be the clerks and the sheriff.
I, I know in, in real business, we always put Thursday and Friday off because you couldn't get anything done on a Friday anyway. And it was a, a basi, basically a wasted day anyway.
You know, yeah, I like seeing how the further discussion goes, but, you know, my thoughts are, we'll take that day off, we'll approve the holiday schedule. It's not gonna be even for everybody. There's nothing we can do to make it equal.
That's right.
And I, I mean, I'm just not worried about it. Some, some, sometimes, what, some, one group wins, sometimes the other group wins. And, I mean, I just don't think I'll be working Black Friday.
I think my issue with it is, is A, I'm tired, sick and tired of talking about the holiday schedule. It's been the third or fourth time we've brought it back. And the last time we approved it, everybody was okay with it until they weren't okay with it. And now we're gonna change it for Good Friday, but then we're gonna still roll back into the same problem we had at Easter. So we're not just talking Good Friday, we're talking multiple days. Now we're talking not just eight hours, we're talking a possibility of how many hours are we gonna add?
The only thing that would change if we were to bring it back is we would, we would add that holiday for Thanksgiving. Good Friday has already passed, so they didn't get it. Now, that doesn't say, you're gonna go, you're gonna run into the same issue for the next year's holiday schedule, which obviously will be brought back in December for approval, but you're right.
That's my point. I mean, it's gonna be a never-ending, somebody's not happy because they don't get a holiday and someone else gets a holiday. But everybody's working on different schedules. I thought when we did this, we all agreed, this was pretty fair, even though the tens and twelves are getting substantially more hours realistically overall throughout the, the course of the year. And the eight to fives are, you know, you're already getting a day more than eight to fives right off the bat. Right? Basically, it's eight hours, so I guess almost a full day more. So for me, I'm just, I don't have any interest in changing it again personally because I think if we change it now, you know, is, is someone, the other department, all of a sudden, they want to celebrate a holiday and it's not, you know, this is, this becomes so constant, and I understand your frustration, I get it, whatever. But we've beat this thing so many times, how did we not figure this out when we did it for the third time this year? So for me, I don't have a big interest in changing it. I'll listen to everyone else and everyone else's opinion, but I just don't see us ever getting a perfect holiday schedule where every single department is happy because I've been here for three years and I've yet to see every department happy with the holiday schedule. And I think that's unfortunate because I really think we worked hard on this last one. And I thought we were all on the same page of, hey, this isn't necessarily fair across the board, but it's as fair as it's gonna be, and we're all pretty happy with it, until we're not. So that's just my two cents.
Mr. Chairman, well, you know, the change this year has been the reason for this. I mean, we went, we changed schedules mid-year, so that's the reason it wasn't, and it was done in a hurry.
Well, but we brought the holiday schedule back.
Until we live through it, till we live through it, we don't know. So that's why. I don't see it happening every year.
Well, then maybe we should live through it and next year we take a look at this again, but just my thoughts. Any other discussion?
I don't, I guess, I just, I'd like to see it brought back, the schedule, so we can approve it, right? You're just needing direction of what we want.
Well, this is, yeah, I guess so, a direction if we want to bring it back and discuss it again.
I wouldn't discuss.
So if we're re-bringing, bringing back the holiday schedule is gonna change it for other holidays. We're not just talking about Black Friday.
No. The only thing we would be adding is, there would be another holiday schedule added because right now you have five eight, four-ten, and then twelve. We would add another one, which would be five-ten. It would look exactly like the four-ten, except we would be adding that Friday for Black Friday, for just that particular schedule. Nobody else would change. That would be the only change in the holiday schedule.
That's what we're talking about right here.
Correct.
Okay. And that is for just the five-ten?
Correct. It would just affect the clerk and the sheriff.
Just the clerk and the sheriff?
Yes.
But the sheriff's gonna have people working that day anyway. So, I mean, have you been to Walmart, Black Friday? He's gotta have people.
But not his office staff. He has deputies.
The office, okay. Okay, so he's got deputies working.
But he doesn't have, like, the secretaries and the clerks and stuff.
You know, in, in principle, I see exactly what John's saying, or Commissioner Henry is saying, that, hey, we've been, we've already beat this thing and it's been approved. Everybody's thought it was okay. I, I'm okay with that. In principle, I don't like Black Friday, having to work Black Friday. I'd just make a decision right now whether we move forward or move forward. I'm looking at it again, or be done with it because I don't really want to be talked about either, and it's never gonna be fair.
Right.
I mean, Black Friday to me, I'm just kinda, you know, it's kind of a waste, it's kind of a wasted day, just, just in principle, but...
Right. The fairness is never gonna be there unless everyone's on the same exact, exact schedule.
Yeah, and that's just never gonna happen, and I'm, and that's not what I think we're, that's not what I think we're getting to, but...
I, I would support a Black Friday as a holiday, but I think we change it beyond that, it changes mine.
I, I don't want to have to redo it again.
No.
And, and I agree, you know, and we all agreed on it, and it's, it's my, it's my mistake for missing that on the first one because I, I'd have seen that, I thought, whoa. I don't know if this is an oversight, if we're still tweaking or what, but I don't want to keep tweaking. I want to bring it back. I don't want this to be like budget adjustment when you want something different, we come back, oh, by the way, we want this staff, this staff. I mean, if I'm gonna do this, this is it, and I'm, and I'm done with this.
Me too.
But just for clarification, the sheriff has had no issues with this. You've heard nothing from him. He's already scheduled it. We're good there. So realistically, it's only the clerk's office that we're discussing.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Wood?
I would support, still, I still stand by my supportive given of the Friday off.
Okay, so let's have a motion for what direction y'all want to deal, do with, do this.
If you'd like, we can bring the holiday schedule back then with those changes or approval next meeting.
I'd like to be more specific than that. I'd like it to be specifically Black Friday, the Friday after Thanksgiving.
So with that, fourteen...
Yeah, it's Friday, November twenty-ninth.
So with that, four-ten's will go to a hundred and thirty hours worth of vacation? Is that about right?
Well, the four-ten, that schedule will still say, stay the same. It will be brought back with, so right now we have three holiday schedules. It'll be brought back with four holiday schedules, and it'll be the five-ten. And the five-ten will get the additional, so the five-ten will have a hundred and thirty hours, correct?
We'll bump them to a hundred and thirty, eight to five, still get a hundred and twelve.
Correct.
And twelves get a hundred and forty-four.
And the regular four-ten's, like the road department, will still stay at the hundred and twenty hours. That's what it will look like, being brought back.
All right. If y'all wonder, it's, what's the motion?
I just, I'm curious if you two are wanting to make it a holiday all the way around, right? I mean, it wouldn't...
It is a holiday for everybody.
Okay.
Except for those.
Except those two.
And our staff will come in and work the thirty hours, and they won't work twenty-five, like, admin will get the half-day off on that Wednesday. Our staff will work the entire Wednesday.
Do we have to bring it back?
It has to come.
Vote on it after we do, do the, look at the new holiday?
Yes, the direction would need to be bringing back the, the holiday schedule because that's what will need to be approved, if that's what you guys choose to do.
Yeah, then, then I would like a motion, we bring it back as a holiday for the, the Friday after Thanksgiving. Is that enough?
Yeah.
How is clerk's office on five-ten's? Is that what, we went, we went...
It's a split. It's a, we have split staff.
We're there five.
So you got half the office is there Friday, half the office is there Monday. That's what, that's what's...
That's ideally, yeah. Ideally, that's how it works, but, you know, scheduling my staff is not always that easy. They have vacation, they have, you know, it's...
Oh, I, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, we're, we're there five days a week, ten hours a day. Somebody's there. So that was my argument always, we're not a four-ten schedule. We're a five-ten split, and we're, it's a different, it's a different thing.
I'm ready to move on and get on with it.
Y'all make the motion. Larry, what's your motion?
I'll make a motion that we bring back the Friday after Thanksgiving for the clerk's office.
Right.
Bring back the Friday after Thanksgiving clerk's office. What do you mean?
We're bringing that back for discussion.
For discussion.
And then that would be...
Oh, we're not fixing it right now?
For resolution. We can't.
You can't, it's discussion.
It'll be on a resolution.
Why can't we just vote on it right now and get it over with?
Does it have to come back as a resolution?
We've gotta rework the whole...
Probably, no.
She's gonna have to break her schedule back.
I guess it could be.
Okay, so that's your motion, bring back the Friday after Thanksgiving for the clerk's office as a holiday.
It'd have to be for the five-ten.
Five-ten.
Yeah, not scheduled. It would have to be that motion. That way you encompass the sheriff's office as well.
Okay, that'd be for the five-ten schedule?
Correct.
For that?
Any kidding?
Five-ten.
Okay, that's the motion?
Yes. So if we...
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wood, a second from Commissioner Crockett.
Can we have further discussion now?
Now we can have further discussion.
So you brought, so you brought up a good point. If we do this, our other office is gonna move five-ten schedules. Is that what's gonna happen? To get more vacation? Wes saying no?
It'll just be the one-time deal is what it'll be, right?
Well, right now, as it stands, you guys have given the direction on who can work those schedules right now, and those are the only two departments that you have allowed to work that schedule.
Okay, so this isn't something, okay, I'm good with it.
Mr. Chairman, it won't be, can it be on the consent agenda? It doesn't have to be discussed again, does it?
Yeah, I was gonna say it could be.
It'll just be part of the resolution.
It'll be on the resolution consent agenda when it's brought back.
Unless you pull it.
It will be pulled. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Allison.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is award unsure as... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is award on Sures Road Chip Seal. Jason Burns.
Morning, Jason.
Morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, we request a quote, uh, Chip Seal on Sures. Those departments have been out there pulling shoulders and rolling in, uh, milling on the shoulders and repairing the shoulders that we'd like to go through and, uh, complete the repair on this deal. We're requesting approval to award on Sures to Jay, thank you, Services.
Questions? I don't have any.
This is all, all bits sealed, sealed, the whole deal?
It's not a sealed bid. We did this one on a, uh, our construction contracts for the chip seal. Go ahead and get it out. Then we, chip seal season. Um.
Okay.
And we'll talk about project updates. We do have some sealed bids coming up. So being a chip seal, we did not do a sealed bid on that.
Okay, so this is just, this is just carryover for timeframe? Did, did we get?
Correct, but we did go out and get multiple bids through our construction contracts.
You did do that. That was gonna be my following question. So we did get a price, a good, a good price?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Questions? Saying no further questions, we'll look for a motion to award on Sures. Is that right? Road Chip Seal Bid.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Yes. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is award Muscatell Road Rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, what we're requesting from here is to award an extension of Muscatell Road to Constructors Inc. They were just recently on Muscatell for the city and we were approached by the city to, uh, more or less partner with them to extend that road. What our goal was, was to try to catch them while they were out there so they could just keep going and they got it done a little too quick, but their price is what it is and it's the same price that the city did to extend that through to Orchard Lane. And what they're doing, what we're asking to award is a, uh, they're milling up the road and, uh, mixing it with the emulsified oil, placing it back down, rolling it in, and then coming back on top of it with three inches of pigment.
Questions?
I was just gonna say that it's really nice and then you get to the county's portion and it looks really crappy. So, um, this is in my district and Commissioner McCutcheon's district. It's where we, our district's, um, border. But I would really appreciate the approval of this to make the entire road one smooth road all the way down Muscatell.
Were, were we approached before they started the project to partner with them or no?
No, sir, we weren't. They were ongoing with it and maybe they were before I came on.
Yes, my understanding was they, um, had approached the former Public Works Director and it got lost, I guess, in the transition. And I don't know if the city didn't approach Wes or it just ki- it kinda got lost, um, somehow between the shuffle of the former Public Works and everything, but they weren't, they, I saw the letter that was sent by Mike and it was sent to the former director several months ago. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Um, have they, I guess I probably can't ask that question under this discussion, so I'll save it for later.
We do have project updates.
Talk about that one then.
I don't pay anything.
All right, if no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion to award Muscatell Road Rehabilitation, uh, contract to Constructors Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Same.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Yes. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Next item is request for the approval of two new positions for licensed mental health providers.
Morning, Warden.
Morning, Jason. How we doing?
Good.
Part of our conversations in the past is to try to, uh, building, go for each team position. Currently in our budget, currently we're operating, so, so there's no impact to the, uh, hopefully we can get some, and this is a lot of coming over.
Have any discussion?
Appreciate the efforts towards mental health.
No questions, thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, we'll look for an, a motion to approve the request for approval of two new positions for licensed mental health providers.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett? Yes. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Warden.
Mr. Chairman, next item is request to discontinue room reservations. Josh Mack.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Josh.
So we've been working on our contract, I think, still the last year and a half to get this moving forward. We try to get a little bit of control of it. Um, this specific thing is taking way too much time of Betsy's, way too much of Betsy's time. It's not being fit for the fire departments and everything. So it's all we're asking is basically to stop our rental business essentially. Not closing down or stopping the use of the facility. It's still available to the cities, to the county, and if there are any events pertaining to those, such as the big road meetings, things like that, that we've done in the past. We don't mind doing that, but the issue is, is we're seeing over twelve hundred people a month on average. So with that, plus the collection, the billing, everything that goes in with that, that's just, it's way too much. It's basically consuming all of her time and I can't use her in other areas that we're planning to utilize her for. So to move forward and make the fire, the EMS side of it, and the training grounds better. And then our return obviously is not, you know, I'm not charging when everybody else around town is charging. We're definitely the cheapest by far because our objective was not to make money. So it's all we're asking is to be able to stop the room rentals that y'all had approved and kind of take a step back and focus on what we need to focus on in the future. I mean, we can still partner with people and do things like that. We just aren't gonna be bringing to make money anymore. So we need to come back. And like I said, our, our income was, uh, so for the non-charge classes, this is anything we do for CFD, CPD, APD, AFD, and the county as a whole, Sheriff's Office, Detention Center, et cetera. We're at like three thousand forty-five people utilizing the classes and it would've cost thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. So we never, we don't collect that. We completely don't charge it. And then for the training ground usage, we've had nine hundred and thirty-one people utilize it, um, with two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, totaling forty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So again, that's money that we're not charging, so we're not making that. It's just additional that we're providing to public safety. Um, as far as the charge classes go, and this is just one year's worth of stats, this is June twenty eighteen to June twenty nineteen. Fifteen thousand one hundred and seven people, forty-two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars seventy-one cents. The training ground usage that we charged for is two hundred and thirty-eight people at three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. We made a total of forty-five thousand. You figure that is our helicopter rental because that's our biggest, probably bill that we collect. So like I said, the cleanup, um, another issue we have is the air conditioning in the back half of the building. People want to utilize that bay and whenever it's a hundred and ten outside, it's about a hundred and twenty-five inside, I think, to swamp cooler. So Brian's helped us, uh, one way for us to fix that is to update the AC unit, which we already use the land some money for, but it's been reallocated towards the communication tower. So it's really uncomfortable for these companies to basically be charged and then have to pack two hundred and fifty people back there. I mean, we tell them they're bad, so they accept that, but I still don't think that it's the right thing for us to do, so. Instead of jumping in for all these additional repairs right off the bat, I think we should just pull this back and focus on utilizing it, whatever we go for, which is fire, EMS, and police training, detention center, et cetera. And then we'll accommodate what we can beyond that.
Commissioner?
I don't have anything right now.
Josh, I have a lot of questions for you.
That's fine.
Okay. Why was Betsy hired?
Right here, I actually have the minutes from the meeting and I do the request, so. It's what we had asked for, the permanent basin regional training center was going out of business. They wanted us to assume basically the use of the training ground, et cetera, as far as that goes. Their biggest customer was Wood, DOE. That was their biggest customer. They definitely did not see the amount of people that we see on a monthly basis, but they knew they were gonna work. So her, right here, I asked specifically for her to be put in that position so we can work with the college to get the EMS program started, which we're out with NMSU, but we are working decent. And we've been having a first responder EMT class at least every semester. Now, she's not coordinating that, but that was the plan. Like she was maybe wanting that. We've had to shove that to Rick Parks. And Travis has been assisting with that.
So Betsy was not hired to lease out the building because that's what I?
No, that's not exactly what she was hired for. She was hired to help us maintain it and keep it scheduled.
Okay, so.
And then be assigned to other fire and OEM duties.
Okay.
So basically to eliminate having to have the coordinator because we had lost that position. We were gonna be able to utilize her more.
But she, she was in part justified in coordinating and keeping the building clean?
Yes.
Okay.
Not necessarily keeping the building clean, but keeping it.
Maintained.
Maintained.
Whatever. Okay, how many ti- how many meetings have you had there, fire, over the last year, two years, three years?
Ours? We did at least the fire board every other month.
Every other month, so six.
So that's guaranteed six of the other.
Except for the ones that are in Artesia.
Yes, sir. And then those ones?
So three a year?
No.
No, six. There's twelve a year.
Twelve a year, so every other month we're down here. Okay, six.
So we do that and then anytime the departments are coming in to do a CPR class or they're coming in to do any other training, there has that firefighter, one or two, whatever classroom classes they have going on.
And how many of those, well, are? Just?
I'd say on the DFP side, we're well, we're probably twenty to forty a year right now. Now, that's gonna increase with this policy change because we're gonna be requiring those classes to be done, so there's gonna be a lot more classes.
So we can call thirty a year?
Yeah. But then we have Carl, that fire, who comes in and wants to utilize the building as well. And there's times where they use it two to three weeks every other month, I would say, where they're in the classroom or on the training.
Okay, what are they, wha- what are they using for? I mean?
They use it for a variety of classes. They'll do pump ops, fire ops, or, um, they go out using training grounds to do.
So they're, they're using it for three weeks every two months?
Every other, yeah, roughly every other month.
And they use the entire facility?
Not the entire facility. They'll use a classroom for X amount of basement and they'll put out on the training grounds. So it's not that necessarily, the classrooms are overloaded.
Okay.
They're full every single day.
Okay.
On average, but we just, like I said, it's, it's not the matter of, we don't have the space. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the resources to run a rental business. That's, that's where the issue is. And I tried to move some of it to see if it was just maybe too much on Betsy. So we took Rika's duties and moved them to Betsy and put just that on Rika and that was an overload on her and she does a lot of stuff for me.
Okay.
Because of the hassle of dealing with all these companies and trying to get collection of their payments and not wanting to pay, not wanting to pay the late fees, or getting contracts back that are marked out with them initially net, saying reference this agreement with the county. That's our contract. Whether they mark third or not, so I've addressed that with Cass multiple times. He's talked to and we've talked to her. Like I said, it's just more of a hassle for forty thousand dollars.
I'll make a deal with you. You'll make a deal?
Yes, make a deal.
Let's forget the training. Let's get rid of it. And then let's sell the training center. That's my deal. So get rid of the whole thing. And that's the only deal that I'll make right now. So I think you've got eight people that are staffed down there. And I hear constant complaints from chiefs, fire volunteer chiefs across the whole deal that can't get ahold of you, never answer your phone. Yeah, you're just too busy. But then you go down there and you can shoot a shotgun through the place. There's not a lot of, there's, there, there seems to be a lot more people than works being done. And now you wanna take another task and get rid of it, a task that you've said that's, that's not for profit, but it made forty-five thousand. I understand if you have dedicated staff, that is a losing deal because she probably makes more than forty-five thousand. However, that is revenue and you use her for a lot of other things. And so I think that I'm on board if you wanna forget the rental, but the whole facility needs to go. And if you keep the facility, thanks, you're better be renting it out and you better go and try to rent it out more to help justify it because you've got an IT room down there or some sort of a whatever room. It's been that way for two or three years. And there's been no, that, that, there's been no improvements to it.
What's that, EOC?
I don't know what, I don't know what all the acronyms are, but yes, some big room.
No, it's not EOC, Commissioner, but I've only seen it in my facility one time. We did a very quick walkthrough.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
I did. And I asked everybody how long that room has been like that.
The EOC has been upgraded. That was a project that we were working on.
How long was it like that?
How long was it going? It was way before me. I've only been here since twenty sixteen and it was exactly the same way whenever I got here.
So for three years, you let it sit idle for three years until you just fixed it? I don't think you're using the facility to its, I don't think you're using the facility how it ought to be used anyway. Sell the facility or rent it out every day.
I agree with, uh, Commissioner McCutcheon. I think that, that we ought to approach it a little differently. I think that what we need to do is look at it, put a, uh, repair reserve, figure out what we need. If it's, if it's mo- properly staffed, prove it to us. And then we need to, uh, possibly put a reserve and then maybe we need to reprice it, you know? Rather than to cut it off where we have lots of, of community, uh, use out of it. Uh, I wouldn't be for cutting it off. I think that maybe, uh, if nothing else, we need to look at what it takes to make it a success. And if that's an increased price, then that's what we need to do like we would any other business. And, uh, so I wouldn't be for closing it, no.
I've got a couple of quick questions. Some of them have already been answered, but I'm gonna go back to the first one. When you said Betsy was hired, she was hired for EMS, what was that again?
It was just basically to coordinate the use of the building.
For EMS training?
Like I said, permanent basin didn't seem to, the number of students that we have in charge determined the amount more.
But with that?
Like I said, our, our objective was not to be bringing it out to every single company in the, in the basin.
See, I thought that was our objective. I need to go back and look at the minutes because I think I even asked that because I got kind of excited. I was sitting in Commissioner Wood's chair and I love making money. And, uh, I think that's where I was that time. And that was a big product, big push that, hey, we can rent this out and really turned it into a moneymaker and it's gonna pay for itself. So I thought that's, I'll have to look those minutes up and, and find that.
Partnerships with other organizations essentially to be utilizing it more, such as the college.
But, so back to Betsy. So Betsy was gonna do this EMS, but now it's been pushed to Rick. Well, that's a training class, right, EMS? Is Rick Burke the training coordinator? So that makes sense, right? I mean, that would make a good, good marriage right there that he coordinates training. So seems like that's probably where it should be. I kinda remember Betsy being hired for maintenance and schedule, which you alluded to. Now, back to my old hotel days, I kinda remember scheduling, you know, massive conventions with massive rooms and it is a lot. But once the group is in-house or, or on facility or whatever y'all call it, we call it in-house, correct? If you don't know my verbiage, just say, hey, I don't know what you're talking about. What, what is it that's taking her time? So you, they check in that morning, they go do their trick class. She's not in there with them. Is she scheduling other classes or is she doing billing at that time?
Billing, scheduling other classes. If there's any issues, she's there. Obviously, I address those issues.
So as long as we've got a, a, some kind of program that helps her schedule, that part isn't hard?
That's a very simple part, yes.
Okay.
Hard to schedule.
And then while they're?
Biggest issue is getting the collection and for the amount of money coming in. So gain versus loss essentially because it's a loss. We're, we're losing.
But while they're there? But while they're there-
So, you're in a position you're charged for, I'm content with that.
While they're there, she's not babysitting them, so is that when she is using that other eight to ten hours a day?
Some she, some she does, because they're in her office constantly, this is, that's the issue. She'll go in there, address whatever their issue is to the point, and then we're good to go. And like I said, some companies are worse than others.
My point, I think, is, is, is while they're there, uh, we've got a, a whole another, a shift, where we can be doing the billing, the collection, and all that. So I'm confused on that, I'd like to understand that a little more. I agree with Commissioner, uh, Carlson, maybe we need to look at the rates, um, if that's the case. I don't wanna get crazy, because I do think this was a partnership. I remember, and I don't remember why Concho paved the parking lot, but there was something to do with this, right?
No, it had nothing to do with this, it's what that was, was we wanted to pave that outer portion, and they wanted to utilize it for overflow parking, because of the increasing employees, so that's how that partnership came about.
Okay, 'cause I'd like to know those, find those as well, 'cause I, I wanna make sure we're understanding that. I just see this as a good partnership with a lot of these oil guys, 'cause there's no rental space in our, in Carlsbad, or Artesia, for that matter. But not, they're not coming up here for that. But I know it's utilized for that, and it's a big issue. And I hate to cut something off that, that's helping a lot of folks in town. Now, I don't wanna do it to a point where it's a burden on us, but I wanna understand that burden, 'cause, you know, with the limited experience I have in scheduling thousands and thousands of events a year, I, I, I wanna understand how y'all do it, maybe we can tweak that and make it a little easier for Betsy, um, or whomever. 'Cause the other thought is, I know when we rent, or we have meetings in Artesia, we pay a cleaning fee. I, I don't see why that would be unreasonable, to say, hey, here's a cleaning fee, this is for everybody, it's standard, and, uh, we move right on. In that way, you know, I think there's a cleaning service in town, right? But maybe there's some kind of partnership we can have with an outside cleaning service, she won't be able to vote on it, but, to, to take care of some, I'm just thinking, I'm not trying to be sarcastic or anything else, I really am, I, I really think this is a great facility and a great use. The VFWs, how often truly are they there training?
The VFDs, not honestly, I mean, I'm not arguing that they are, I'm just saying we're trying to improve that to where it is utilized more, and that's what our focus needs to be.
And I hundred percent agree, but if we have a scheduling calendar-
If it's three twenty-one rentals, then that's strictly what Betsy is gonna be allocated to do.
Well, and I'm quite certain that's why Betsy was there, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, but, but that's neither here nor there. Now, I would say obviously county becomes before anything else, and that's part of your scheduling. If the county is gonna schedule a VFD training, they take precedence over anything else.
Any, any part of this longer training is highly relevant.
Obviously, so, you know, that's part of your scheduling deal, so I would never, you know, if you're trying to ramp up trainings, I, I applaud you, because I've sat through many of the chief meetings, where that's their biggest topic is, we need more trainings. My question at the chief's meeting was, why do we have this facility if we're not utilizing it for trainings? Why are we still sending people off to be trained if we have supposedly one of the greatest training centers around? I, I would love to see us-
All that out there needs to be open, so where's the money gonna come from to upgrade that?
We spent a, a few dollars out there, right, in the last year?
You're looking at millions of dollars to bring that up to what it truly needs to be, because it's just been sitting in the sun, not being utilized.
Why aren't we utilizing it?
Because it doesn't get utilized, that's what I'm saying.
Well, then why do we have it? Now, I'm back, and I wasn't on this, I wasn't this far gone, but if we're not utilizing it, why do we have it?
That's a question that I've had for a long time, with some of the-
But you're in charge. But you're in charge for three years.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to tell you, we've been, since I've taken over, it's been utilized a ton more than it has been in the past. Is it utilized as much as it should be? No, definitely not.
So we have a fire training center that should be for tr- fires, we should have the top-of-the-line fire training in this side of the state. But we're not utilizing it.
It's utilized more than it was before, it is utilized-
Well, with room rentals, but-
Yeah, no, the training grounds is utilized more. When I got here, I don't, I think there's been like six classes when I was hired.
And now how many?
Now we're doing probably fifty to seventy a year. Which is more, but it's a lot, it should be utilized, in my opinion, on a weekly basis.
I mean, to me, I think, I don't understand the facility at this point, if this is the case. Um, what I would like to understand more is, I, I like the room rentals, because I think we're actually providing a service. Um, I'd like to understand the scheduling more, and see how we can help Betsy, but I, Betsy's maintained and scheduled. And that is a full-time job, I completely agree with that, but it sounds like that's what we hired her for. So I'm not sure what you're trying to move her to, when she was hired for-
To take care of the facility, like she does.
Mm-hmm. Which is maintenance.
Just have more time to put towards the fire and OEM stuff.
Which she wasn't hired for, 'cause that's not part of maintenance and schedule. Is that right?
No.
No, I'm asking a question, I mean-
It states in the bill description that that's the issue.
That she would maintain and schedule?
Yeah, maintain and schedule, and assist with other fire and OEM duties.
Because I think with Rick and, and Betsy, there should be a, a good discussion on, hey, uh, Betsy, I'm going to schedule this for the VFWDs, I keep saying WDs, that's wrong, and, uh, this for Carlsbad, and, man, I'd love to see everyone on this side of the state out there, it's a wonderful service.
Are, are we charging a deposit fee currently right now? 'Cause that's one thing we do with the community centers right now, is we do a deposit, so they're essentially paying money upfront, and then we can refund them after the fact, so I don't know if that maybe would help with the collections part of it, if we can essentially charge a deposit upfront, so we're not having to struggle getting that collections part on the back end. But that's something that-
So what are we looking at our billing? What are we addressing that?
See, and I think, I think that's a lot of it, if we can just clean this process up, if Cass can give us a contract that says, here it is, and if they don't like it, we don't have to rent the facility, that's fine.
Exactly.
You know, here's our contract, here's our billing structure, here's how it worked, here's how you schedule it, it should make it simple.
I di- I, the whole billing thing, I'm not even understanding, I really, this is gonna sound horrible, find it stupid. Nobody in this town allows a rental where you don't pay upfront.
Paid at the back.
I mean, in my mind, if we don't have a credit card that's been run, not just the number written down, or a check in hand, don't rent the dang facility, it's really easy. There shouldn't be countless hours spent on billing, because there's not any facility in this town that doesn't make you pay upfront. So, in my mind, that's ridiculous to be trying to build and trying to pay, charge late fees and all this other stuff. It's not rocket science, it's very simple, get a credit card upfront, or a check in hand. I mean, anytime you go rent anything in this town, and you turn in your lease agreement, your rental agreement, you have to have a credit card or a check. And all these oil companies have people with P cards, they have people with credit cards, and they have people with checks. So, if you change your policy, and that's the policy moving forward, it's, would take a lot of time away from her schedule to do that, because she'd get one credit card, one check, there wouldn't be billing. I mean, I don't know how this happened, that we're billing for this anyway, rental should be paid upfront.
It's just the way we did it initially, it's a basic, because like I said, our intentions were not to do what we're doing today.
That, that needs to change. Well, that needs to change, that's a ridiculous-
We, we started with taking over what Permian Basin had, which obviously was nothing, because they couldn't even stay in business, so.
Well, Permian Basin's been gone a long time, so I, that Nolan Boyd, but I mean-
January two thousand eighteen, so.
Hold on one second, Brian's been, I'm sorry, Brian, you had a question a while ago, and-
Well, I knew the points to pick out, he does face some challenges at that facility, uh, particularly in the back big classroom. It's where a majority of my complaints are coming in, we're getting one, two hundred people in there at a time, doing some geological showing tales or something, I'm not quite sure. But we're using evaporative cooling in there, there's no way we're gonna keep two hundred people even remotely comfortable in that type of space unless they're coming from ten PM to six A M, right? And so, another challenge that has kind of been there each and every year, him and I have both been there, but more so this year, um, we've had a couple of rain events where they're getting one to two inches an hour. And we got the only metal building out there that has a parapet wrapped around it, and, uh, turns it into a cereal bowl, I like to call it, and the water doesn't get out except inside the building. Um, I do have proposals to, to install, uh, fifty thousand tons, or not fifty thousand, fifty tons of refrigerated air across, I believe, two of the big bays back there in the back. And then also, um, a proposal to have the roof coated and address the, the, um, turning it into a cereal bowl by perfo- by, um, having outlets cut in there to where it just shoots that water out. However, before it turns that parapet into a bowl, we do have those proposals that have, it's something I was working on at the end of last fiscal year. I bet you it got hammered pretty hard, but this is one of the things I intended to bring to you guys, uh, coming up soon, 'cause we're going into a good time of year to get this type of work done.
Uh, you know, I, you've mentioned several times that, that it's not making money. And, and I understand that, that the emphasis was to, to cover costs, not make money. But, you know what, you have to put all those costs in, and if we, and if we're not covering those costs, then I would say to you, you need to be at the county commission meeting, hammering us to, to look at the rates that we're charging, because, uh, that is the emphasis of charging the rates, is to cover those costs. And so, uh, that's part of your responsibility, Josh, is to be here telling us that we're not covering costs, so that we can do something about it, because we can't do something about it if you're not bringing it to us. And so, I, I wanna see that, uh, coming, you know, you're talking about, uh, the, the first and foremost, it's training for the county, and I agree with that, but you know what, other organizations have training schedules, and they do the training schedules a year ahead of time, so that whenever they do set out the schedule that can be leased out, those, uh, training dates are already on that schedule, and that's what we need, because that's called planning, and that's what we need is more of, is the planning. You know, uh, once we get all the proper cost accumulated, that it's gonna cost us, and the repairs that we need to work, because that's part of the cost too, is things that we need to do, uh, maybe not a hundred percent today, but we need to put a reserve in there to cover those costs. And, uh, once we get that, then we can compare what we would have to charge to other facilities in the community, and see that we're in line with that, but we've gotta do all that work before we even consider, uh, taking other steps, which I think that, that we haven't done those, those steps. Thank you.
May I add to that comment just there? So, you're right, we need to add the cost of projects and things like that, however, I do wanna remind this commission, Eddie County got a smoking deal on that property out there, I think we paid one point eight million dollars for a thirty million dollar facility, had a bunch of land to go with. And so I think when that deal was made, you know, at the time, and di- almost entirely different commission, I think there was some anticipation, the new, that building did need some help, it was in a state of neglect. Uh, we have overcome a lot of that neglect, but these are kind of the two, uh, things that, the other items took priority, and we addressed those, and these are some of the remaining things that are really presenting themselves.
And I totally agree with you, at that time, knowing that there was things that we were gonna have to do, 'cause we got a smoking deal, that should have been part of the cost calculation that was made at the very beginning. And when you come with the rates that we wanted to charge, that should have been included in those rates. Because now we're working from behind the eight ball, and I hate working from behind the eight ball, because now we're trying to play catch-up, because we've had other deteriorations since that date, and we need to catch up. And the only way to do that is through the rate, and we need to be doing that, we should have been doing it from the very beginning.
Well, I just wanna remind the commission that that property was purchased in two thousand fifteen, fourteen?
Yeah, around there, it was pretty, right after I came.
And I didn't become director till two thousand seventeen, so I've had it for two years.
I'm not placing blame.
And I'm just saying that in the last two years, Brian and I have done a ton of projects out there to-
I, I agree, Josh, but your responsibility is to bring it to us, what you need. And when you don't do that, then you're not doing your job.
You know, I'd like to see the facility, i- if those fixes need to happen, because I'm not necessarily just worried about rentals. That's a, that's a total side note to me, I think that's a great deal when we can do it. I would like to see those, because I want you to come and say, hey, we can't rent this out anymore, because we've got so many VFDs, and we've got people coming from all over the state to train at our facility, we don't have room for them anywhere. That would be great, and, and I would one hundred support that, because that's, that's why that building's there, that's why that facility's there. All I'm saying is, I would like to see it used for what it was, supposed to be, but until we get there, I, I don't wanna see an empty building either, so, whatever adjustments we can make, that would be great. I would love to see those proposals, Brian, 'cause I'm with you, I think we need to, I wanna make sure that building is ready to roll, so that when, when we do see these VFD trainings, and all these other trainings that, that we should be seeing out there, what's it gonna take for us to have them? And, uh, and that's probably our fault, we should have jumped on that to some extent last year, if you had those proposals. But, let's get them, let's see where we can make that correction, and, uh, and get this facility up and running, and working for people, and charging the proper rates, so, anything else?
We probably, do you have a ballpark on what it's gonna take to get the facility up exterior, exterior and interior?
Well, the one point four million that we had from the land sales, Brian and I had plans for, that was gonna go towards a facility, so that was supposed to-
Yeah, but that, does that get the, the, all the outside stuff in good shape, all the inside stuff in good shape? I mean, be- because I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Henry, look, the principle is how the building feel every day. And if it's with firefighters, that are on firefighters or EMS or something, that's great. Um, but if it's not, it needs to be filled with somebody, so the building, first of all, doesn't deteriorate, we can, we can realize some sort of revenue off of the building. But I'm afraid that those improvements are going to cost so much more, that we won't be able to recoup that cost hardly ever.
So far, some of, most of the improvements that, or him, he and I have accomplished since we've been here, um, we've had estimates developed for us, we got kind of the scope of work, building needs, so on and so forth. And we go out and we, we bite these things off as we're able to afford them. Probably ninety percent of those, ninety-five percent of those have always come in under budget. We do have, you know, as it's functioning right now, when you look at the classroom going up to the front of the building and the parking lot, all that's functioning great, in my opinion. It's everything in the back where they can utilize that really big space, uh, you know, a hundred to two hundred people they can put in there at a time. It's an awesome space, it wasn't designed for that, it was designed to store vehicles. And so, we're using a space that it never was intended for, and we just need to improve the, improve the conditions out there. And I can't say that, I mean, in the space that I'm talking about specifically, twenty tons of cooling, I don't think I'm ever gonna make that room seventy-two degrees, um, but I think if I can get it between seventy-five and eighty, it's gonna be a heck of a lot better than it is today, when two hundred people get in there. And that's just how it is, when you got, you know, one of the biggest shop doors in all Eddie County on that, on that same room as well, so.
I agree.
Yeah, if we can see those, I'd, I'd love to see them personally, those bids.
I just have one comment question. If I'm remembering right, you were given a couple of million dollars, maybe a little bit more, for facility upgrades? And then you weren't spending it, so we took it away?
I think we spent it, the only thing we had sitting was one point four from the land sale, that's all that we're working on.
I don't, this one, I don't think this was from the land, so this was prior to that.
Uh, shortly after we bought the Perm- the Permian Basin, we did a lot, what, I think it was around two point six million dollars for facility upgrades, which I just, I think just last year, you recently ended up, I think there was like a hundred thousand dollars that was left in that building fund, I think, or something.
So you spent, you've put already two point four into that building?
I'll have to go back to the safety, because we worked through all those things.
But if you put a million, and we gave you two point four, where's the other?
It, it would've had to have been two point six, around that, because it was-
No, it was more than before, I got there, that whole front was-
Yeah, and I'm not saying under your, I'm just saying in general.
I ju- I just wanna make it clear for the new commissioners to know that there was money put into that, building quite a significant amount after we purchased the building.
But it was all, most of it's focused upfront, but we'll bring in a breakdown, I'll be with Brian, he'll sit down, make you guys a breakdown, we'll show you all the repairs, and then what's needed still, what those proposals are, and I'll bring you a proposal on new rates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, you're here next week.
Appreciate it, Josh.
Do we need to, obviously make a motion on this, right? It's on the agenda.
Yes.
So do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion, basically?
Can we not change it to just direction?
You can do a motion to, to not discontinue the room reservations and, and direct Josh what you want to do. I mean, bring it back, bring this back the next meeting.
Do we have to say that? I mean, can't we just say?
You don't have to.
We.
You can, you cannot even make a motion on this. Go forward.
Not discontinue, or we continue room reservations out there and just leave it at that and then come back.
Yeah, you can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue room reservations at the fire service training center.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is discussion and direction on Loving Fire Department.
So the next thing is, is the Loving Volunteer Fire Department.
It's on.
We need to go to their council with some sort of proposal.
So what you have here is my proposal to the county to propose to the village if we're gonna take over their fire protection. Um, right now, we have four volunteers that we've been working with. Um, Otis and Malaga have kinda been training with those guys. We had to start them from no training to get them trained up. We don't have anybody with any kind of training or anything to kinda take the lead down there, so we've been having to do that. Um, we have got them off probation with the state fire marshal's office, so they are good to go there. Um, all their funds are available. We don't have to write requests or anything like that. Right now, the only fire station that is a benefit to us is the one over by the high school, the newer one, Station Two. Station One is less than a mile away, so it doesn't benefit us. We won't get any state fire funds for it. They haven't been for years. So, um, I'd recommend the Village of Loving do as they please with that facility. We've been slowly moving everything from Station Two to Station One that is of no use. Basically, equipment that's outdated, um, trucks that don't run would be too expensive to basically repair. We would just be better off buying a new one. So Station Two has a tanker, um, which we've got it pretty well repaired. Their command truck is in decent shape. They have a rescue brush truck that's out at the office that we've been working on and we've almost got it repaired. Um, and then we moved their engine completely out of there. And we put in one of our reserve engines from the office because that engine had been rolled. And it was just semi repaired, so it's not necessarily safe. So we put one of our trucks in there in the meantime. Response wise, the county's been covering everything for Loving. Um, pretty much Otis has been doing that. So I would like the Village of Loving to put three and a half million dollars towards their fire department. That would help us buy the apparatus that we need to buy and purchase equipment that we need to purchase. And look at building a station in the future, um, possibly out off of thirty-one and Donaldson Road. Donaldson Farm Road is where we're looking at because of the influx of calls. And on our district boundary map, which was set by the commission, they cover out, they cover that portion of the county. So it would be an ideal place. The best fix would be to just merge Otis Fire District with the Village of Loving. Make it one department. That gives us thirty guys versus three guys. We take those three guys, we put them in, we have good leadership there. And that district chief would be able to oversee that single station at this point and then hopefully a new one in the future. The other thing that we've discussed is asking the Village of Loving to implement a fire excise tax to the village. Similar to what the county has to put towards the fire department. So I mean, there's, there's multiple options. The three point five million, that number could change. But they definitely need at least an engine. As I would say is an immediate need, which is gonna run them anywhere from about five hundred and fifty thousand upwards to eight hundred thousand for what they need within the village limits for fire protection. And then at that, people to volunteer. You know, we've been recruiting pretty heavily, but we get the same three or four guys that show up and they've been training every week. They've been doing an awesome job. So I commend those three or four guys for the effort that they've been putting forward. The mayor and Roberta can kinda chime in on this part, but he's not sure what the council's gonna do. So he just wants us basically to bring them a proposal and then let them shoot it down and go from there and just essentially negotiate. So their meeting, their next meeting is next Monday night, so I'll be at that to take them the direction that y'all recommend. Or like I've told the mayor, the village can just cover the village limits. I'll ask the commission to restructure the boundary lines and we'll, Otis and Malaga will cover the county portion that we need to cover. But at this point, I need to make sure that the county residents are receiving adequate fire protection. When they call nine one one, not five minutes later because we tone Loving and we know nobody's gonna go. So then there's a delay to Otis or vice versa.
Questions?
I know Commissioner has quite a few, but I wanted to know where, I know what you said last time about the city of Carlsbad. But in talking with them recently, it seems like they're still possibly interested and I know it would still be a couple of years out. Are those, is that still a possibility at some point?
Rick Lopez, yes, possibility. I've talked to the city manager or administrator. And he told me in the hallway out here that him and the council were not in favor of that because that adds more employees and more overhead for them. It would be a pretty, it's about three and a half million dollars that they wanna split three ways. So the county would be paying a portion of that as well. So I don't know if that's something that we wanna get into because that's, that's a long-term commitment to employees and I ju- and in my opinion, I, I don't know that that's the best route to go. I honestly don't. I mean, we could, we can look at that. That's the, it's, I, it's an option. But, um, if that's the case, then in my opinion, it should be City of Carlsbad's, not Eddie County's responsibility for. Cause all they're wanting to do is transplant their people. They're wanting us to keep up the facility, the equipment and, um, that's a lot of cost as well, so. And then my questions are, you know, what kinda calls do they go to? Do they go to every caller? Is it already like the response we get out of the city that's only structure fires and EMS, you know? Are, are we still handling all the tank batteries, et cetera? Do we get mutual aid from them? How's, how's that all gonna work?
So really, it hasn't gone anywhere from?
No, it's just kinda fell dead in the water, honestly.
Thank you, Josh.
Josh, first of all, I appreciate you getting, uh, Loving off of probation. I think that's a big deal and I know it took some time. Appreciate you getting that done. That's important. That's important for them. They haven't had much, they haven't had much support and as are some of the outlying communities in the, in the county. Sometimes are, are kinda forgotten. You're talking about, did, did you talk to Mayor, uh?
Estrada.
Estrada about the three and a half million?
Yes, sir.
You told him, you say, hey, we're gonna ask for this. What did he say?
He said it would be up to the council. He would, he would kinda talk to them and kinda see where they float. But he hasn't really gotten a solid response. They want me to come and talk to them at the meeting. So like I told him, I was gonna go talk to them first and I said, I need to go talk to my commission actually first and see what, what they think. If they think this is a ballpark number. And it's like I told him, this is up for negotiation, obviously. This can be a lump sum. This can be over five years, ten years. It's just gonna be our planning. We need to plan to be able to utilize the money as we get it.
Okay.
And maximize it.
Mr. McCutcheon, yes, when we talked to the mayor, Josh and I, the bottom line for him was, he was on board with this because his biggest thing is he just wants the, his residents and his, uh, village to have response when needed, bottom line. And so he's on board with a lot of this, like Josh said, um, the money and stuff. Of course, he said we'll have to take it to their council and stuff, but he was definitely on board for doing all of this.
Even the merger with Otis, he was, he, he understood the need and the reason for it. It's like I told, I'm not trying to take any name away from. What matters at the end of the day is who's taking care of everything. Cause I mean, even the tanker, honestly, there was a snake inside the cab when we first went down there. That's how long it had been sitting.
How many, how many volunteers will you gain by picking up Loving? Are there volunteers in Loving or is it the exact same number?
There's four right now, so.
But they're already volunteers, correct?
Well, they're, yeah, they're new applicants since we, cause they wiped out all of their people. They, they had pretty much shut it down.
So they weren't being able to respond to fires with those four people that were applied, but now we've got them and?
We've got them. We're training them. We're still not allowing them to necessarily go because they're not trained to a level to be by themselves yet.
Will that, w- will we, will we be able to trust them to go on a fire since they haven't responded to one in years?
Yeah, well, we're getting them trained to be able to be at that level, so we're building them up to.
Okay. How many fires are in Loving yearly, more or less? How many responses are there?
We've had two in the last four weeks.
Okay, so twenty-four, twenty-four year or?
Yeah, prior to that.
Ballpark?
Sorry, I do have their calls.
Yeah, at that rate, the city of Loving's gonna last like three weeks, so.
All right, so right here, Loving Fire Department's the top one. Three hundred and fifty EMS calls, two hundred and seventy-seven fires. The plectrions, those are meetings essentially.
So now?
That's February first.
Is that just inside the city limits?
No, that's anything that they're toned to. So within the city limits, those three hundred and fifty EMS calls, they're definitely that. I'd say.
Within the city limits, three hundred and fifty?
Yeah. They, we probably run some days five or six EMS calls down there.
Okay, and so that's Malaga and Otis then?
Yeah, so then if you look at Malaga fire, they have three hundred and seventy-two fires and Otis has six hundred and seventy, which Otis is running a bulk of Malagas and a bulk of Lovings. So that's where you're kinda getting distorted numbers, but I'd say probably upwards of fifty to seventy fires. And I mean, that ranges from a grass fire to somebody's burning in a barrel and somebody calls in or they see smoke, so. Probably between seventy-five and a hundred fires within the village limits.
Now, I thought, no, this is from eighteen to nineteen.
Yes, sir.
This is just a few weeks ago.
Yeah, we ran the, from the discussion at fire board that we were having, this is what the report was run off of.
Now?
You're seeing for those three agencies, those three departments down there, we have tw- two thousand five hundred and eighty calls in essentially a year.
Can you help me, can you help me understand these numbers? Because I, I was under the impression that, that Loving Volunteer Fire Services, I mean, they're a snake in the truck, right? So they're not responding to anything. How do they go to three hundred and fifty or?
They don't. This is how, this is how many times their pager was activated.
How many times they were toned.
This is just, this is just how many times, this isn't response, this isn't.
No, yeah, this is not response. Response is three. I can tell you that.
Response is three, that's my question.
If you go down a little more, there's three people that made calls since February first to July thirty-first.
So, so in the last year and a half, there's been three calls made out of Loving? That's why there's snakes that live in the trucks. Okay. All right, so would this Loving station be dedicated only to Loving? Or is this also gonna open up, is it gonna be like this? Hey, you're pretty close to Loving, go take care of it.
Yeah, if it, if it rolls in and that's our plan and that's why we put the trucks we have in there. So as if, if there is a fire, if there's a Malaga or an Otis volunteer close, they pull into that station, grab that engine and go. Instead of driving all the way back up to the Otis station to get a truck and turn around and drive all the way back.
What is Loving's current fire budget yearly?
Uh, state fire funds, they get, just look at this too. I wanna say it's like.
I don't remember. It's like.
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, cause they only get one station.
So for, so for, so if it's a hundred thousand, we're gonna have to have thirty-five years for this three point five million? And then who's gonna pay for that? Three and a half million dollar facility, trucks, X, Y, Z?
Well, the plan is we'll utilize state fire grant, which is two hundred thousand dollars and they should be a priority for that. So we could get two hundred thousand of the truck money now. But aside from that, that's why we're asking the village to give us basically some insurance money towards what we're gonna be taking on because we're gonna be encumbered with that expense in the future.
I think Mayor Estrada's wants to take care of his people. I do not think, and, and he's expressed concern to me, you know, about, hey, three and a half million dollars. A lot of dead gum money for Village of Loving. I mean, how are they ever gonna come up with that? And we've got facilities that are pretty closer. We have one that looks like a pretty decent facility. Why do we need to build a new facility?
The only thing is, is basically to provide the protection, to have the trucks strategically placed in the areas where we need them.
But if we're just talking about, I mean, if, but if we are talking about Loving, so we got Malaga, Otis, and then we have one in Loving. They can take off on, uh, you know, they can go down thirty-one or whatever, maybe a little quicker than that. But there's a building down there, it's a stucco building with two bays, right? The one that's on the north side, south side of town, excuse me, on down off, on, what is it, what is that? But it's a stucco building with two bays. What's wrong with that thing?
I don't know. Outside of loving.
Yeah, directly by the high school, the one you're talking about, Station Two? Station One?
Yeah, Station Two.
I'm trying to think of the name of that street.
Like, that's, that's the main station that we're utilizing, yes, sir.
Well, what's wrong with that? Why do we need to build a whole new building?
We're not now. That's what I'm saying, future. We're looking ahead, planning. Why? Because we need the facilities to have, house the apparatus and we don't have to. I mean, that's what I told them. It's, it's all up for discussion. We're just telling you, planning wise, looking at the amount of calls, what we're covering and where we need stations, that's what we lay out.
How many extra trucks do you have? Well, let me tell you.
Right now, we don't even have, uh, we don't have the trucks to put in the station. I know what you're asking.
Yeah, we got a stucco buildings down there. It's pretty good. All we're trying to do is keep the.
But just in trucks, you're looking about roughly one and a half million in needs right now.
But why?
Why? Because of what they have down there hasn't been taken care of. Hasn't been maintenance, hasn't been anything. You're gonna have to upgrade the fleet. The tanker's their newest truck. I mean, the brush truck, like I said, they have a brush truck and a rescue truck. And they're both sitting at my office and we're stealing parts off one to try to get the other one to at least operate.
Okay, I'm, I'm in support of trying to protect the people of Loving. And, you know, I think we've got a little decent building down there. I don't think the three and a half million dollar price tag is. I think we can stick a pretty decent engine down in there, maybe with this hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand you were talking about. And I don't know what an engine costs. Maybe it's half a million, maybe it's three quarter of a million. I, I, that's probably, that's probably closer. But, you know, maybe there's a lot of upgrades that you could do to the, do to the one. I don't think this needs to be a full-fledged big deal right now. I think, I think you've done a good job going in there, getting them off of probation. They can get their eighty-five thousand a year back from fire, fire excise fund or whatever, the fire fund. I think we can do that. And then we just try to keep the little trash fires, you know, in Loving from spreading to a house and killing somebody. I think that's kinda the goal with this. And then we try for right now to take Malaga and Otis and handle the bigger stuff. Where you have the more, where you have more assets and, and facilities, but I think we need to try to take care of them. But I think three and a half million dollars is gonna be a humongous stretch for the city of Loving when they only are budgeted for eighty-five or a hundred thousand a year. So, um, but, uh, let's see if I have anything else. I wanna think of asked all the questions probably more than you wanted me to ask, so.
So if the, if the county takes this over, we're, we're encumbering all the costs. So I just wanna understand that we're gonna ask them not to put anything towards us. Is that what I'm understand, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you want me to tell them next week.
I think let's keep asking questions and we'll come to another.
You said you was gonna, the plan was to merge the, the Otis fire, volunteer fire with the Loving. Have, have we talked with, uh, have we talked with the Otis firefighters to see if they're okay with all that?
That we had, um, David Looney, who's the district chief of Otis, had come to that meeting and said that, you know, that's been a discussion for a while was, in the past, we've discussed it with Malaga cause we have the same issues in Malaga. You know, we have one or two guys that show up, so how do we maximize our response?
That's I'm a little selfish since I live in Otis, huh?
Yeah.
Don't lose a bunch of firefighters.
Well, and that's the, that's the whole goal is, is how do we, how do we maximize the amount of volunteers we have to cover the four thousand plus square miles that we cover on a daily basis? You know, to get more than two guys to show up or one guy, to make it more safe for the volunteers.
And right now, Otis is responding, like Josh had alluded before, they are responding, but the, the issue is they're having to wait because Loving gets toned out first. They're having to wait rather than if we were to combine and make it go out right away.
Dispatch a long time ago. We actually have a dual tone now. But prior to us knowing that there was even an issue, you know, we, we would have to get on the radio and at three o'clock in the morning, when everybody's sleeping, there ain't nobody get on the radio and say, hey, send Otis, uh, structure fire. So, and then again, you have your, your delay, so. And, you know, we could get more volunteers out of Loving if it was part of Otis. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know. Sometimes that makes a difference to people because they. Sometimes that makes a difference to people because they know the old chief or whatever and they don't like, you know, there's a lot of times that I go out to events and people will say, well, I wanna volunteer, but I don't like that guy. Well, then go over here and volunteer over here and help us any way you can, you know, I don't have an issue with that. We just want people to help us. It's hard to get people to do that kinda work for free anymore.
Yeah, it is. But I will be, I, I will try to make that meeting with you.
Okay.
In Loving, twenty-nine.
Thank you, sir.
I, I think you alluded to it right now. I mean, we're talking about something we're already doing. It's not like Otis goes flying out there and comes to a screeching halt at the Loving line and like, oh, sorry. Good luck. I mean, that's not what's happening. We're going out there and taking care of business, which is what we should be doing. I mean, it's the same thing, discussion we have with the cities when we reduce their money and we do not respond, I mean, come on.
And the city's been helping us, and I do wanna point that out since you brought it up. Um, we've assumed it, I talked to Rick and basically we're treating it as a county area because before the village doesn't have the same, um, agreement that we have. Where we get an engine to a structure fire, they only got an ambulance, so now they're actually sending an engine down there to help our guys as well, so.
There's a couple of questions I do have. That three and a half million, I do have a hard time thinking Loving's gonna be able to swallow that. I don't see how...
I understand.
If they can do that, they keep it and build their own stuff, and obviously that's not happening, so. I, I don't know, I think we should look at that, um, and rethink of it. I think Otis taking it over, if Otis is good with that and the fire chiefs are good with that, that makes sense to me. I mean, why not? You're already responding and Malaga's helping when they can. The Fire Excise, which bothered me when you said that, does Loving currently pay to the Fire Excise Tax? So they're, they're taking out even though they're just a village? I mean, I didn't know how that worked since they weren't necessarily a town.
In the past, we used to have that divided up, uh, to Loving and Hope Fire Excise, and then that was taken away. Um, and then re-divided up into the other fire departments, so they do not get any Fire Excise.
No, but I mean, they pay, like, a Loving residence. I mean, you said, let's, uh, you wanna put into, uh, like a GRT, right, kinda like what we have.
My understanding of that's only in the county. So in the village and in the city limits, you don't pay into that.
Oh, right, so I just wasn't sure if the village was, so the village is excluded. It is only county, they don't consider Loving a county. Okay, 'cause I didn't wanna double tax them because they're small, I thought that's kind of a bummer, uh, for them, so, okay.
It's just to put a little more money towards the fire department, because they do have a lot of, they have a lot of stuff that's gonna need to be replaced in the next...
And my question with that's gonna be, since Otis already receives Fire Excise Tax from the county, now you're gonna put Loving, but we're gonna merge it and call it Otis Fire, we're gonna, and then charge Loving Fire Excise Tax. Is that only gonna go to Otis? That's gonna be a little weird, isn't it?
That would be the issue, is it would go strictly to that, to their fires' protection services right there, so yeah, in S H S.
I mean, how does that shake out?
Be split out, like, for Fire Excise?
If, if, if they were to pass, if, if their city council said, yeah, we're good with, with making Loving pay a Fire Excise Tax within the city, but now we've merged with the county and Otis is running our fire, who are they, that's going to Otis only, it will not...
If we merged them, yeah, it would be going to Otis. Because it would be one entity, not two.
So Otis is gonna get twice? They'll get it from the county and they'll get it from the city of Loving?
Yeah, essentially, yes.
Okay.
But they wouldn't be able to spend that money anywhere except for within the village limits for that station.
So that would exclude the station you're wanting to build, which is outside the city limits?
And that's why I say that's, that's our location.
So if, if you built, now we're chasing worms or... So if we build a, uh, fire building outside of the city of Otis, the Fire Excise Tax can't build it. But now are we gonna, can we...
Essence, it could because that's their fire protection area that they're...
But you said it's, it's gotta be within their city limits, so if it's...
Well, within their, within their area that they cover, so...
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, can we store fire apparatus in there if it's outside? I mean, all of a sudden, you're, you're taking weird stuff and...
Sorry, they, well, they have their boundary lines and they have to cover, their priority is obviously the village. A long time ago, when the commission agreed to give them that sliver of the county to cover. That's their response area as well, so they have to provide coverage to that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we've, we gotta help Loving, we're doing it anyways, making it official sounds fine to me.
Talking to the State Fire Marshal's Office, um, they would basically allow us to go straight from Loving into Otis, pull that station over and they wouldn't delay our state fire funding. Because usually they make you do your probation without funding, but talking to them, that would not be the case.
And I did see their station Saturday. It's a nice station.
It is, it's very nice.
We had to be at that football field. Our teacher was... It's a different, different subject. Throw it in there though, but it, it's a nice looking facility.
Yes, sir.
So, looked pretty new, so, good.
Mister Chairman, I have, I'm really having a hard time wrapping around going to the Loving Village Council meeting with a dollar amount, like, one point five, three point five. I have a hard time with that until you guys, like, fill them out. Because I don't wanna say, oh, the county commission's gonna commit one point five or two million and then that's what they base their vote on. I don't, in my, my personal opinion, I just feel like we don't need to go with a dollar amount until you guys kind of see what their feelings are, because everything we've heard is from the mayor. But that's my own opinion.
Yes, and from my perspective, my thing is, is if we assume the responsibility and liability of that, we are taking all financial responsibility in the future, so. What, what are we gonna spend in the next X amount of years, which we looked at ten to fifteen and figured it out? And so, I mean, like I said, the station, it's, it's a want. It's a need, but it's more of a want than a need. And, so we don't necessarily do that, but still we replace every truck in there within the next fifteen years and you're at a couple million dollars, and how are we gonna, how are we gonna pay for that? You know, Fire Excise is obviously good right now, but who's to say tomorrow it's back to what it was two years ago? So how, you know, how do we do that and then we're on the hook? So I have to come to the commission and ask them out of general fund, which is backed down, so how do we, you know, how do we combat that? That's where I kinda wanted, you know, if, in essence, we're gonna take your headache, what's, what's the cost of, of that headache essentially for us?
So I think what, what you're saying is direction is negotiate this. Let's get some council, let's get some county, y'all sit and visit, and, uh, is that the direction we're talking?
That's the direction I think we should go with.
That makes the most sense to me. I mean, everyone sit down, talk this out, come up with some kind of agreement that works for everybody and then take it back to their counselors and commissioners, because...
Okay.
I don't wanna make it a determination, yeah, let's do this, and then they're like, whoa, that's way far, you know?
I, I'd just kinda like to get a feel, and, and the reason I wanna go is because I wanna see what their village counselors have to say about it.
Me too.
You know, that's, that's, I mean, I don't necessarily need to throw out any numbers, I could tell them, you know, that, what the projected cost would be over the next three or four years or maybe five years, but we're, we're not, by doing that, we're not actually asking them for money, we're just telling them what the projected cost would be and what are their thoughts on that.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I would like to see.
Yeah, I agree. There's your direction. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Mister Carlson, you'll be my...
I will, I'll be your second.
At work. Thanks, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, Roberta, let's take a quick break before we go back to that ten o'clock deal.
Yes, sir.
Brianwell.
How long of a break would you like to take?
What do y'all want, five minutes? Five minutes, get everybody, take care of, five minutes.
You're gonna have to take your coat off in a minute, you can't do so.
John, you can go in and try that shirt on, see if I need to get a, get it resized.
Just wait, man. It'll, it'll be here, we'll have another one. That's two years in a row, though, it's getting rough up here.
Think I might have some little inside information or something. May have some inside information.
Did you buy him a game?
No, my granddaughter was shooting that cannon and it'd be darned if that shirt didn't land in my lap and I thought, it'd be a perfect one to give to John for him to wear.
Put it on, Kaden. I didn't go for Kaden.
You think you'd be willing to, huh?
Yeah, he should be, I mean, if it was orange, he'd be, I'd be wearing it, you know?
He would not.
I would too.
Well, I wouldn't.
You know what, what we all should've done is wear orange. We all should've just worn orange instead of blue. Can we get?
We should've.
No, we shouldn't. She said, you know, John, look, we, your team needs a little support right now, we know the bad loss.
That's how to do it. Sorry, we just wanted to show support to you guys. It was just, it was so brutal for you, we just wanted, you guys aren't left in cold.
Well, you're gonna have to get out of my way. I'm trying to get to the food lines. I've been eating my candy.
Which is exactly, oh.
That, I want you to control your... Yes.
You just wanna run it out the jump drive or you wanna pull it in?
Right, he's got a jump drive.
Awesome. He will be driving then, and he keep, whichever, just gonna be like a big monitor out there.
Let me change this, please.
Okay, I'll let you do that. Is this your water? Would you like, okay, cool. I can offer you some water because mouse can get a little dry up here. I completely understand. Will somebody be joining you? I'm just, if you want this, it's here. The mouse is there.
So I could just do this right now, basically? Wow!
Yes, sir, you sure can. And then what we're going to do is we're gonna shoot it on both, it looks like it may have to be on both screens, awesome. Alright, let's go ahead and get you open. Give it just a second. That's it? I'm so sorry.
Oh, just do that.
You can do that, you can hit enter, whatever you're more comfortable doing. Sounds, hey, see? Piece of cake.
Technology, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you got it, you're good to go. Commission packets?
Exactly what's on laws.
Perfect. Oh, thank you, sir.
You are welcome.
Did you, what time did you leave this morning?
Not too bad, about five o'clock.
That's not bad.
No ones are.
I just figure you're gonna be an early bird anyway.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, the dogs are there.
What are you doing to me?
I thought for sure, you know, as soon as I moved, they'd say, okay, it's time to eat, but...
Nope.
And I'm telling dogs. So I left my wife a coffee, I had to tell the dogs to get up here now. They'll let you know.
So are you going back today or are you here for...
No, I'm here, well, I'm staying in Artesia, but today and tomorrow, they're gonna go to Riedoso on...
Oh, that's right, true.
Same thing up there.
Excellent.
You know, I guess I'll probably be down middle of the end of the month.
Hazardous.
Yes.
Is it in Hobbs or...
Yes, it's in Hobbs. Hopefully, we're done with our weekly meetings for a while. They're nice and short, the secretary keeps them nice and short, but... Me too. I think we will be... Do you know all the commissioners?
No, just you and Steve.
Well, this is John Henry, he's our chairman.
Hello, Chairman Henry, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well, how are you? Oh, thanks for being flexible with me.
So you didn't get to wear a blue memo? I got a shirt here if you need a blue shirt, you know, they were nice enough to...
Oh, you know what?
Make sure I have one.
I'm running to the car, I got... I would, yeah, I got a, I got a Carlsbad Blue shirt.
You'll survive just like that, I promise.
Mister, I grew up in Socorro though, so.
You're fine.
So we probably dislike Artesia as much as...
That'd have been a lot better if you were in orange, but that's...
Robin, it sure had a lot more room than you want to come into these meetings.
Well...
And they had more candy and grapes and...
Definitely had more candy.
Yeah, they're Snickers, I'm not eating it.
But the grapes are still the same.
Either way, I'm not eating them.
Jim, how are you doing?
Terry, how are you?
Doing real good, real good. Sure glad you're here today.
Steven, well, he has a drawer full of them if...
The only thing I have in there is one from today.
Alright, I think we're all back and ready.
Mister Chairman, we're gonna go back up to the timed agenda for ten AM for our Brianwell remediation update by a Mister Jim Gerswell, uh, from the Mexico Energy Minerals and Natural Resources. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, uh, and I do appreciate y'all being flexible with your time and therefore my time, so I have to get up at two in the morning. And so I'm gonna give you an update, uh, I'm in the area for the balance of the week. I'll be doing a similar update for the Water and Natural Resources Committee of the State Legislature on Thursday in Riedoso. Have the same discussion with y'all as we were with them. So I've got a, a packet in front of you and I guess I'll, if I can figure it out, I'll run the slides up on the TV screen as well. But if you just turn to the second page there and, and not to, uh, not so much for y'all's education as it is for the folks in Riedoso tomorrow. These... Few pictures here are just to remind folks what we're trying to avoid in this whole situation. And it's been, well, eleven years now, uh, time that I first started with the OCD. And what you see in those two photographs, um, our Brianwell collapse is, uh, up to the north and northeast of town here at Jim's Water Service in July of two thousand and eight, and then at Local Hills Water Disposal just north of Local Hills in November of that same year. And just for a sense of scale, uh, each of those initial holes is probably about three hundred feet across. And they open up in just a matter of moments. And it's due to, uh, too big a brine cavern, uh, too, too close to the surface underneath the ground and it's got weak and it broke. And so as a result of those two inst- instances back in two thousand and eight, I, I was pretty low on the totem pole with OCD in those days. I'm actually the Environmental Bureau Chief now and I've been for the last three or four years. It was my unenviable task to get to the bottom of what was going on. Uh, and that's when the situation here at the former I N W facility at the South Y came to light. Uh, and so in the intervening years, um, quite a bit of work, uh, as y'all are probably aware, has been done trying to characterize the situation down at the South Y and come up with some options of what to do about it. And now I'll have you turn to page three. And as a result of, um, that hard work and millions of dollars of, of state monies, um, we've come up with this picture and, uh, I feel kinda goofy talking to County Commission about the lay of the land, but we'll just kinda go through it real quicker. So, uh, north is the top of the page, uh, you're looking down at the South Y, so you've got, uh, Canal Street coming from town, uh, and the Y there. Uh, if you go down to the southeast, uh, two eighty-five down on the Loving and on into Pecos, Texas. Uh, and if you go to the southwest... And if you go to the southwest, sixty-two-one-eighty down to Carlsbad Caverns. So we've got the Santa Fe Railroad tracks across the streets of the north, CID's main irrigation canal. The red and the orange blobs that you see on the diagram represent the main and ancillary caverns based on all the geophysics that we've done. And so the focus of our remedial effort is actually going to be on that red portion, the main cavern itself. The larger orange colored area out to the side. The estimated cavern height in those areas is only maybe a few feet tall and it's four hundred and fifty feet beneath the surface. And if they were to fail, we would probably see some ground movement at the surface, but it might be in the order of inches impact at the surface, potentially still could be damaging though. But those areas aren't as problematic as that main red area is in there where the cavern height is probably in excess of a hundred feet in height in those areas. So moving on to page four. Now, before you were looking at a plan view, now we're kinda looking at a cross section here of that underground cavern. And the easier part to see is the main cavern itself. There are some of these what are labeled fracking initialized dissolution areas, these wings off to the side of it. But based on, excuse me, on the geophysics, it doesn't look like the entire cavern is full of just saltwater brine. But there is a lot of insoluble material that didn't dissolve over the years. That, because we have bedded salt in the geology in this part of the state. Also some salt that remains undissolved as well as roof material that has already failed and fallen into the cavern. And this layout, so we've got this, perhaps a relatively thin speaking layer of pure brine at the top of the cavern and the rest of it's mixed, it's a rubble filled. And that kinda situation is what drove primarily the design we have to fix the problem. So moving on to page five, slide number five. What are we gonna do about it? We're gonna install a series of wells, sixteen of them total, to pressure inject grout in two phases while taking out the brine. The trick to all this is to maintain that cavity pressure, the brine in there, because that's basically what we think's holding the roof up now. Anytime in the past where we've allowed brine to come out of the cavern in a controlled fashion, we've actually seen the ground move very slightly, but we can detect it. And so it does look like that's actually what's holding it up. So for every barrel of grout that we inject in, we've gotta pull a barrel of brine out. So we've gotta control that the whole time. And we're gonna do this in two phases. Phase one is dealing with that clear portion at the top where we inject a what is referred to as a high mobility grout to spread across that area and disperse that brine and in essence create a new roof for the cavern. Then in phase two, drill down through that cap into those grout piles, or not grout piles, excuse me, the rubble piles and inject what's known as a low mobility grout. In essence, to create some structural columns, more support in that rubble pile to hold that new roof up. Moving on to slide number six, this shows you that routing sequence. We will typically be working with wells in either pairs or perhaps three at a time. One or two injecting and one removing. And the initial design, back when we were in the RFP phases on this thing, incorporated twenty some odd holes and working, and they were over a broader area, and working from the edges toward the center of the cavern. The thought being we would try to give ourselves a little more stable footing before we got to the deeper portions of it. But as a result of our efforts over the last year in installing enhanced margin equipment down there, we've actually drilled into the cavern in a number of instances and watched it respond. And that response led our contractor, Wood, to rethink this process. These outlying wings out there do flow brine fairly easily. And the concern is we can inject a whole bunch of grout into the subsurface and go into those wing areas and run out of grout, run out of money in essence. And not have significant effect because we didn't have a, didn't get the opportunity without going for more funds to go to the main part of the cavern itself. Also, that preliminary design had the spacing of each of the grouting wells on about a hundred foot centers. And again, as a result of the work we've been doing the last year, year and a half, we've realized we can actually put those things a little bit further apart. And we're going to attempt to work from the center out rather than from the outside in. So it's a bit more risky, but we think it's gonna be more effective and more cost effective for the overall project. Moving on to page seven there. This is basically just a schematic view of that process, but it's, you bring sand and cementation material into the site, into the site. You drill your holes into the ground, you mix grout with the sand, inject it into that subsurface cavity at the same time you're pulling brine out, process that brine and truck it offsite. The current planning is to actually have two rigs running twenty-four seven during this initial drilling and grouting phase on it. And it'll take, it'll probably about two years just for that portion to finish. Moving on to page eight. Aspects of risk management, obviously, number one priority is to keep the public safe. And that's a lot of what drove the installation of this new monitoring equipment based on our experiences with the failure at Jim's Water Service in Local Hills and some international input, actually. We think we, if something were to go bad for us and the cavern were to start to breach, we actually feel that we would have several hours' notice before you would see anything happen at the surface. And so we've been tied in our monitoring equipment since two thousand nine, two thousand ten into the Eddy County Emergency Response Infrastructure. And they've programmed us into their work and we've got an automated system out there. And so it's actually computer controlled. And if certain alarm conditions arise, we call a red alarm situation, Eddy County Emergency Management is automatically notified and they do what they do. There's no human hemming and hawing about this, okay? And in that, oh, nine years that we've had this system in place, we've run a couple of tabletop exercises and things, worked it out. But we've only had one false alarm. And so I think I probably used up my good graces in that regard in terms of how many times Jim can cry wolf on things. So we're gonna, we're very mindful of that. So we have these series of boreal tilt meters, we've got five new ones going in, some microsized mixed up already in the ground too. Monitoring the pressure, the grout going in, the actual ground level movement at surface, which we're, what are known as HIPPs, H-I-P-I. Don't ask me what that means because I forgot. Monitoring the volumes that we're pushing in, make sure we've got balance on that. And then we're gonna actually have a kickoff here in the coming weeks with Eddy County, your emergency response again to make sure we lock any rust and dust off of things we have. And then once we're done with that backfill procedure, we intend to continue to monitor the situation for two years thereafter to make sure it worked. Moving on to page nine. Funding of the project and expenditures to date. Now, this is just since the, I won't get my years wrong here, the fiscal twenty nineteen legislative session, which would have been January of twenty eighteen. We were in the RFP process, we had started that fall of twenty seventeen. And actually, by the time the legislature met, we were still in contract negotiations on it. And so there was a level of confidentiality as the department had to have under state procurement process. We couldn't really discuss with y'all, the city, even the legislatures, exactly what was going through there. But nonetheless, as the outcome of that session and with I know efforts on behalf of the commission or by the commission, let's say, and the city councillor in Carlsbad, we were able to secure over forty-five million dollars of funding for the project. Four million from the city of Carlsbad phased over three years. An equivalent amount from Eddy County phased over three years. Thirty million coming out of the DOT Road Fund, and that's over three years, three ten million dollar payments. Two payments of a million dollars each from the New Mexico Environment Department from their Corrective Action Fund, which is actually funded by a loading fee on fuel at the rack, so to speak, but it's what is otherwise used to clean up underground storage, some problems around the state. Three and a half million dollars from the fund itself in the form of capital outlay dollars, I think I'm saying that right, from the local legislators, legislators in this part of the state where, that are affected by the project. And then an estimated just shy of two million dollars in industrial revenue bonds. That number kind of fluctuates based on wherever the bond market is. So that adds up to forty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and eight hundred. Forty-five million, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Expenditures to date on the project, almost six point three million dollars. So what have we done with that six point three million dollars in the last year and a half? Moving on to slide ten. The remediation design has now been finalized. I showed you that new layout. Four of six access agreements are finalized. And as Commissioner Crockett and Commissioner McCutcheon are aware, the last two, I think we've actually got agreement in principle. And I'm hoping to perhaps even wrap those up this week. Maybe I just jinxed myself when I said that. But I'm trying. The traffic modifications necessary have been constructed. Y'all have probably noticed that new shoe fly that pushed a little bit further north. If you're going on Northbound sixty-two-one-eighty and you wanna turn down to go to Lovington on two eighty-five, where you were going in front of the feed store before, you're actually up in the Y and going a little bit further north. So those are in place, but they haven't been activated yet. And so we should be activating them pretty soon. All the onsite buildings at the INW property and any other infrastructure, which is a nice way a bunch of junk that was on the site, has all been removed and cleaned up. I don't know if you guys have driven by there lightly, but that's the best I've seen that property in the ten, eleven years I've been dealing with. We're ready to roll on that site. And on that drill site part, all the grading is complete. We've got storm retention ponds, brine retention ponds, all that kind of stuff, we're ready to go. We're seventy-five percent complete on the utility upgrades, which is mostly electrical infrastructure we've got to get into there. We're going to, in terms of water, we do have a city mangling out front and a tap on it, but we're gonna try to recycle as much of the brine as we can that we actually produce from the cavern and make an additional grout. Minimize the transportation disposal costs of that brine. The monitoring system is, I say it's eighty-six percent, all the subsurface equipment is in. We're still just wiring some stuff up and working out some software bugs on it. The perimeter fencing is only twenty percent installed. We started on that last spring and just fenced that northern portion of the INW property. But we will be, once these access agreements are finalized, fencing a much larger portion of land down there. Not just the drill site itself, but actually our staging areas for materials coming in, office trailers, parking, those kind of things going out on it as well. We are currently scheduled to have the drillers in town on September sixteenth. That's two weeks from today. And as I've mentioned before, we'll be bringing in two rigs. And start, they'll start their mobilization process, setting themselves up such that by the end of the month, we do start drilling. And we'll be, like I said, working on a twenty-four seven schedule thereafter. It's anticipated that we will be able to undertake our first injection of grout in November this year. And we'll be continuously drilling and grouting as we go all the way to August of twenty twenty. So about another year or so on it. So here's, page number eleven shows an expenditure timeline, which, you know, time is money and effort is money. So when you, these are actually plotted in terms of anticipated monthly invoices, which would be reflective of the level of effort down here in Carlsbad on the ground. So the orange bars or columns sticking up, those are anticipated. The blue ones alongside it are actual expenditures since we started the project. And you'll see this ended right here, I think it was through the end of June, this current graph on it. The red line that tracks on there is cumulative project expenditure. Okay, so that's just adding up all those little orange bars as you go along. So you can see from the flurry of activity on there that we'll be busy for about another year or so, year and a half, drilling, grouting, then demobilizing ourselves. And in the last two years, we're, you know, the low level expenditure, but that's still probably another two million dollars over the last two years just doing that monitoring if things go well. So our current budget projections, as I've mentioned previously, we got the final design done. So we've got a final design cost, what we prefer to as FPL three, front-end loaded three, which includes a ten percent contingency. And that price tag is just shy of forty-eight million dollars. What that price does not include is grocery seed stacks, access agreements to date, just shy of two million dollars. Like I said, we've got two more pending, which will add to that amount. But I probably shouldn't discuss it till I got income paper. And then the Brine Well Remediation Authority agreed to give MNR a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year over each of the next three years to offset some of our costs in overseeing this project. And you may have heard, but if you haven't, I'll just tell you now, I told you before, I'm the Environmental Bureau Chief for the Oil Conservation Division, which was a part of Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department. I am leaving that position. I am leaving that position because this project needs me spending more time on it. As you know as well or better than I do, we're going through a significant change in the oil and gas industry in the state of New Mexico and the OCD has a lot of things to do. And so I've had a lot of things to do, but nothing rises higher than this. This has been my, I'd say my project, but a significant project for over ten years now. And even though I'm not getting any younger, I've kinda promised myself I'm not gonna retire till this thing's done. So that's part of where that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars comes. I'll probably be giving it to any number of hotels, motels, restaurants in the Carlsbad area over the next couple of years. But also that totals up to fifty-four million dollars plus, depending on these last two access agreements. And as we got from the earlier slides, we've got forty-five, four ninety-eight, eight hundred there. So we've currently got an eight and a half million dollar budget shortfall. And that is part of why Thursday's hearing of Rios are equally important. So that being said, discussions have been underway for quite some time with the Department of Finance and Administration. So that's the executive brand agency. The Legislative Finance Committee, so there's the legislative side of it. Members of Eddy County Commission, as well as the City of Carlsbad to try to resolve that shortfall. So with that being said, I'm sure you got a couple of questions for me.
I don't have any because I just pick up the phone and call.
But you can still do.
I'll be able to see you more often.
Appreciate you all your work on this, Jim, this has been a deal.
We really appreciate the help that y'all have done through the years and Steve. We really appreciate the help that y'all have done through the years and Steve recently that you've helped us with on some of this access stuff. I'm sure I'm gonna rely on all you going forward in the future, too. Hopefully I haven't made any bad compresses on the good people of Eddy County, but.
Since this is gonna be my district, we're bringing the two rigs in on the sixteenth.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And we're gonna fire them up, and we're gonna run them twenty-four seven.
Not until the end of the month, but.
But at the end of the month.
And they're not, I should say, they're not oil and gas drill rigs.
Okay.
Topless caverns only fourteen fifty feet down, so they're.
How noisy are they?
Uh, not as noisy as a drill rig, but we're not gonna be quiet.
Is there any noise abatement fences that we can put up around that? Because I'm gonna tell you.
We got kind of fencing, but I don't have noise abatement fencing in the budget, so.
Okay. Because we're gonna get, I'm gonna get, not we, I'm gonna get fifty million calls, because those rigs running twenty-four seven.
Yes, sir.
Are going to keep people up at night. I've already get them from the oil and gas activity going on in close to residential areas.
Well, it may surprise you, maybe not, to learn that over the last year, we actually had drill rigs on that site anyway running twenty-four seven, and did you get any calls?
I did not, and that's a good thing, but I just want your number, so that when they call me.
I'd love to get that to Commissioner, but not in open session.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Answered a lot of questions for me.
Now, I just wanna say thank you again. Of course, I've been with you through this whole, or, I'm gonna call it an ordeal, because some of it was, and your commitment to this project has just been outstanding, and we really do appreciate you, and we appreciate you in your new role even more, and we look forward to having you in this area more.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and it's probably actually a reflection of the good people of Carlsbad. Y'all have been great. I thought when I first came down here ten years ago, I can still remember sitting in a meeting over in the carousel room across the river at the Pecorfield Conference Center, when I first finished doing the seismic work down here and rolled out what we'd seen there initially on it, and we were in the midst of a real bad budget year. And the OCD's Oil Reclamation Fund, what is what has been funding this thing for all these years, well, the legislature swept the unencumbered balances of a number of funds around the state government, including that one. And so I rolled out the information and then told the good people of Carlsbad, see, I got any money. And I was surprised y'all didn't run me out of ten on the rail. And it didn't, it didn't take, but I think about a week before then Mayor Forrest, actually, had marshaled forces down here and on it. And Eddy County Emergency Response has been great to work with, and all the locals, DOT down here, everybody's just been great, so.
Thank you.
One of these, I'll come with some good news or something.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
I'll get a copy of that.
Sure. Watch your mouth, man.
We have the resolution and agreement consent agenda. These items are in consent agendas, so if there's any discussion, I ask that you please pull them, otherwise we need a motion to approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
I don't have any items.
Nineteen eighty-nine, electable.
Agreement number six, A dash nineteen dash one thirty-five. Say that one more time. Eight dash nineteen dash.
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
I have that.
Nope, mine was the same as Commissioner McCutcheon, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda, pulling R dash nineteen dash eighty-nine and A dash nineteen dash one thirty-five, and approving the rest as presented.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Two eighty-nine. Okay.
Can you just give me some background, Mr. Roberta, on nineteen eighty-nine?
Sure. So what this is doing right now, currently on our financials, we have two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars on our books, and Rita actually has three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on their books on their side. The auditors have essentially asked us to do this formally through approval to get these items removed. And Cass, maybe Susan, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but Rita was essentially created with the idea that that money was gonna be brought, given back. This loan amount, both the city, the city of Artesia and county had lent money to Rita in hopes to get that money back as working capital loan. However, as you know, Commissioner Henry sits on the Rita board, every expense that they have, we're, we give them that money back sixty, forty split. So it doesn't make any sense for us to keep this loan on the books, because we would essentially be paying ourselves back, is how it works right now. And we, when they spend a dollar, they ask for reimbursement, and we pay sixty percent of that, the city of Artesia pays forty percent of that. Back originally, it was never intended to work like that, that's why we lent them the money, hoping that they were gonna be self-sufficient enough to pay that money back. But now, moving forward, for, you know, ahead of time, that's not the way it works right now, so. And the auditors, it's been like this for several years now, so the auditors had suggested to us that we formally take this for approval, us, the city of Artesia, and then eventually at the Rita board, forgiving this loan.
Is Artesia, did Artesia also give them the loan, or were you just splitting with Artesia's sixty, forty?
No, this actually wasn't a sixty, forty split on the loan amount itself. That's why we did attach the two resolutions, so you could see what originally was given by the county and the city. Correct, yes.
Okay.
Out of that three fifteen, our portion would be two forty-nine, and the remaining of that would be the city of Artesia's.
Are they forgiving the remaining portion of that?
I don't know if they are, but I did send information to the city of Artesia to Aubrey, so I assume that they're gonna be taking something forward.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? And I don't know that for sure as well, but it sounded like at the last Rita meeting, everybody was.
Yeah, it seemed like, yeah, it was, yeah.
That doesn't mean anything. That's a layer in the council, so.
Want to approve this thing now?
Yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to approve R dash nineteen eighty-nine, forgiveness of working capital loans to Rita.
Second. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
We're getting to be a pro. I keep telling him he's getting to be a pro. Next item we have that was pulled was A nineteen dash one thirty-five, employment contract for Alan Davis.
Yes, I ask that it is to be pulled. I think that it needs to be voted on as a separate item, and so if somebody wants to make a motion, then we can vote on it.
I don't, I don't have any opposition to Mr. Davis.
Okay.
We've already, you know, the contract's been done, but I just want an opportunity to vote a different vote on it.
I make a motion that we approve A nineteen dash one thirty-five employment contract for Alan R. Davis.
Second.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, please call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Wood.
No.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Mr. Chairman, is project updates, Public Works, Jason.
He's back.
I apologize, I did not get this sent out in time. We are in the process of implementing a new task scheduling and tracker software. It'll be, in the future, we'll be able to send out, we have a, the way this thing's gonna work is that we've been able to break up all of our departments into Eddy County North, Eddy County South, projects, and then our landfill. So we'll have separate schedules for each one of these departments coming out, and I'll be able to send those out soon, hopefully here within the week, and then you can look at those, and as we have project updates at the future meetings, we can discuss and go over the schedule individually. Where I'll start, and I'll just kind of walk through these, and then we'll discuss them as we go. We'll start with the Eddy County North Department. We have had them, they completed their pothole blitz, they have been working on CR two oh two, pulling shoulders and rehabbing that road. They moved over to CR two oh four and completed that. Actually, two oh two, they were hauling material out and blading and rehabbing that road. They went to two oh four over the last two weeks and completed that last week with the pulling shoulders. And then they are currently on the north side of two oh six, which is Illinois Camp, coming down and rehabbing those shoulders like we are doing on Onsuris, putting millings in, blading those, placing water, and rolling those ends and rehabbing the shoulders. We also have a crew out that's gonna start mowing in the northern part of the county. We know that's needed with some of the rains that have been sporadic through the area, so they'll have mowing ongoing as well. The next projects we have them going to is we have them scheduled to go to CR two seventeen up until the twenty-sixth of this month, and then after that, we have them going to CR two twenty-two, is where we go, have them going. We've also completed a few of the smaller projects with our cattle guard crew, as I like to call them. We, we've done some patching repair on CR three, which was reported to us to have issues with the gentleman not getting emergency services. CR two forty-eight in Bittersweet, we had an issue down there with that road, we went and fixed that, had some culverts on two oh two that had collapsed and were needing to be cleaned out, repaired those on two oh three and CR. We got the CR thirty-eight to potholing that, we have some large potholes there. We also, during our last storm, we had some sand blow on the road on CR two seventeen and two twenty, went and took care of that, and also, and we have on the schedule, a new cattle guard for CR two forty-two, and another one on two seventeen, and another one on CR two twenty-two. So the other thing we're doing with these lists and these trackers is as we get issues reported to us through our online system and called in, we're able to assign these to which department they need to go to. And so what you'll see at the bottom of these schedules is as we're starting to track potholes that need to be fixed, roads that need to be bladed, and our tasks that we're working on getting worked into our schedules. Right now, in the north department, we're scheduled out all the way through mid-October, and we'll continue to add to that with our managers meeting. So we'll jump to the south department. They started out after the pothole blitz, they went to Illinois Camp and came from the south working north. They completed their portion of that on the twenty-second, and we also have them on Onsuris Road, and they're working on completing that, they should finish that today. After the crew one finished Illinois Camp, we brought them down to support the second crew on Onsuris, and they should be finishing that today. And then we're gonna be sending them to King Road and Happy Valley to try to prep that and get it ready to resurface that before we run out of, out of season on that dude. The other one we have on here that we're gonna probably end up rescheduling is Niemeyer Shoulder Rehab. We were scheduled to go there after Illinois Camp, but we felt like they needed to support on Onsuris, so we kind of leapfrogged that one and sent that first crew to Onsuris to support them and finish that one, and then we'll go back and catch Niemeyer. The other thing you'll see on this, and I'll be able to spend a little more time explaining it as we send this out, is this has a scheduled date that we're gonna get there, and then an actual date of when we got there and a completion. So you'll be able to kind of see how we're planning and what we're actually doing, and how much time it's actually taken us, and that's what we're gonna use to, as we go forward, more adequately schedule and plan our crews. So, and then also on this, we have, our cattle guard crew's been doing a lot of mowing in the south. We've caught Happy Valley, we've caught a lot of our stand pipes, we've had a little more rain in the south than we've had in the north, so we have them out mowing. You'll also see that our list of potholes is a little longer in the plan for the potholes, is that once we get a long enough list, I mean, we know where they need to go, that we'll schedule another pothole blitz, and we'll know where to exactly send them, and here's our problem areas. And what we're doing as we get these issues and complaints reported to us, is we'll send out our road manager and hopefully our construction inspector soon enough to check and see, one, if it's an emergency and if it needs to be addressed immediately, or if it's something that we can schedule out with the pothole blitz. So we are checking those immediately as they are reported, and if they are a danger to the public, we fix them immediately. We also have blading on this list and a, started a list of our sign shop. We have several signs that need to be repaired and installed, and so we're getting most of that information off of our issue report that we have up and running now. And I'll also send out an ongoing list of our issue tracker, showing what's been reported to us and how we've addressed each and every one of those. Any questions on the road departments before I move into projects?
No, sir.
I think great.
So the projects, we have several of these projects coming down. The first I'll talk about is Bound's Road. We awarded engineering to that. They have a road section and alignment put together, and currently we're working with Jerry to schedule a meeting with all the businesses along Bound's Road to sit down with multiple road sections and see which one they'd be interested in partnering with us on. And as soon as we get a plan with that and section picked, we will be letting that one to competitive bid. So we do have that one complete, and we're working on scheduling that meeting. From my understanding, we're probably gonna end up doing that here, third week of September is when that's gonna happen. The next one, and y'all, please feel free, if you have questions on any of these individually, stop me and we'll talk about them individually. Derrick Road Chip Seal, we awarded that one last meeting. Constructors, we're gonna be sending out a PSA on that one here this week. They are going to begin on that one at the end of next week, and they said that one will take approximately about a week. They're gonna come in and lay down their first layer of oil and chip, leave it about a week or so, and then come put the second layer, penetration on it. So that one's starting, and it should be done here pretty quick, but it is awarded and scheduled and ready to go. Black River Village Intersection, we awarded that one, the design to that to Stan Tech at your last meeting. We had a kickoff meeting with them on Friday in my office in Artesia. They're gonna begin doing some of the right-of-way acquisition, if we need any of the look and what we can do. We also had just purchased in Public Works a road counter for vehicles, and we can calculate some of the AADTs and the ESOS going across those roads. And what we determined would be the best way to proceed, they have several options of how to align that intersection and how that it could flow better. We're gonna go put out our road counters and determine which of our alignments would be best based off the road counts, because what our anticipation is, is. Cause what our anticipation is, is the traffic is heavier coming from the north to the south down Old Cavern, but it's not near as heavy coming up John D. Forehand.
When you get that ESO count, I'd like to give a copy of that.
Yes, sir. We have, we have several in the county that we're about to be doing. Not only Black River, but we're looking at Carter Road, Derek Road, we're also several. So if you have roads that we would like to count on, please let us know, cause we have the ability to do that now.
If it's one in my district, I want it.
The other thing that that's gonna tie into is when we get our, and I'm gonna talk about that here in a minute, is the, uh, road assessment. When we get the road assessment, what's gonna help us prioritize these roads is having the counts of the traffic that's actually going down that road so that we can help prioritize, this is a bad road, is the traffic heavy enough on it to warrant reconstructing it, or can we just go out there and patch it to get through it? If there's only two or three ranchers that drive down it once or twice a week, then it's not worth us spending millions of dollars to rebuild the road. So, we're gonna start doing several road counts and gaining some actual data in the county. Like I said, Black River Village was awarded for engineering. We're hoping to have that one let out to bid. Hopefully about the beginning of November, with them starting construction on that. You know, the issue we'll run into is the holidays. We're looking at starting construction and mobilizing that one right after the first of the year, and then they'll get that one and be done by the fiscal year this year. On Suris Road Chip Seal, you approved to award that one. They're ready to go. We'll schedule a meeting for them to kick them off and have that one scheduled here within the next couple of weeks to complete that. Musketele Extension, we vote, we voted on that one. We'll get them going on that one. They'll have that one rolling here in the next couple of weeks as well. They're, still have some of the equipment there. If they haven't moved it since I was last out there. The only issue that we might run into there is a railroad, cause we're paving up through the railroad. I do have a meeting with the railroad on the twelfth to discuss several projects within the county and the railroad right-of-ways and the county right-of-ways. So we'll discuss that one, and it shouldn't be an issue.
You're gonna make it where it's smooth this time? Throw it up there.
Did him a rant?
Yeah. It's like a speed bump.
Yeah.
Helps the sheriff, but...
Yes, we will. Yep. The next one is our Eddy County Road Assessment. We are, uh, in the process right now of working through procurement on that, either through an RFP, or we have one of our engineers that is on our, uh, professional services agreement that has the ability to do this. So they're looking into that, and we're looking at also going through an RFP. Hopefully, within the next couple of meetings, we'll have that to you to award, and with the goal on that one, bringing you the assessment uh, right after the first of the year, to sit down and start prioritizing and, uh, planning our attack for these roads and what we're gonna do on them. The other ones that we have that I, I can bring to you right now that are in the first phases is Cherry Road. Um, I talked about this one with Commissioner Crockett. Um, we were approached by the city to partner on Cherry Road from the park to North Canal. We are in the process of working up an MOU based on what we wanna do, and we've also had a meeting with Scott Hicks for a road section and a, uh, alignment of the intersection. Excuse me. And once we get kind of a engineered estimate and a plan, we'll be coming to present that to you with a partnership with the city. The other one that we'll be bringing to you hopefully at the next meeting is a partnership with Lee County on Red Road and Campbell Road. I've talked with Corey Needham a couple of times. He's looking at doing, I think his portion is Red Road and where Campbell Road, or vice versa. And, uh, it's over there on the county line, and we're working on the MOU to present with that one so that, uh, we can design and bid that one and get that road redone as well. So... With that one, we have our, any project, our questions on projects we have going on. That list is gonna expand. One thing we haven't added to that is FEMA projects, and I can also, uh, we're gonna add to that with the FEMA projects as we get them and get those kinda rolling again with the approval of the state. Any questions on projects?
No, but on the upcoming ones, you're also twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth Street, correct. We do not have that one on the list yet. We're gonna add that. When we talk to, uh, Scott Hicks, um, about Cherry, we asked him to look at a road section and a, uh, alignment, which is, it'll be the same alignment on North Twenty-sixth, and he's supposed to be giving me something on that as well, and I will follow up on that one. Thank you. Our landfill projects that we're working through right now is we're meeting with, uh, Fabian this afternoon in our managers meeting to go over his tire shredder proposal. We're also gonna look at a, uh, transfer station. They've given us coloring book drawings of a transfer station that would really improve the landfill, that we're trying to get some preliminary numbers and, and drawings and flow put together for you before we come present it. And we're also looking at doing some land acquisition for the next expansion of the landfill. So we have that one, and we're working through that one, as well as the design on cell six. So, we're working through all those projects out at the landfill.
Thank you for making landfill flow smoother.
Well, in, with the transfer station, we're, I'm afraid to bring you the price tag on that one, cause I know the county has several projects that...
Is the partnership on with the city, or is this gonna be?
It will be. And, and what we're gonna do is we want a partnership with not only Carlsbad but also Artesia, and we have not presented this to them yet because we're waiting to have our, uh, proposal together and tell them this is what we kinda want to do, and, and have our ducks in a row before we go start presenting it to them. And that's what we're working on right now, is getting our preliminary work done and kinda getting a plan that would work, and then going and seeking them and bringing them in and sitting them down, and, uh, getting their comments as well as their feedback, and putting together a good bulletproof plan that would work better for everyone, and essentially the goal would be to not have anyone out at the landfill, that everyone would go through the transfer station, and the only people that would be out at the landfill are county employees. So...
Awesome.
Yeah, I think that's great. The one question I have, and I know y'all did a great job of putting out for the road, uh, pothole blitz on Facebook. Can we do something to help people understand how to self-report, uh, their problem?
Yeah, we'll put out a link in a little, just kind of a, that we, you can still call in, take phone calls, you come in, we have the same form you can fill out if you wanna come into the office, and then we'll put out a link to the, uh, report, the reporter. And it's a pretty self-explanatory deal when you get on there, just your location, nature of your concern, some contact info if you wanna be contacted, and, uh, yeah, definitely.
People are real excited about that.
They are.
Are we getting good news out of it, Jason?
Yes, sir. Um, like I said, I'll put that tracker out in an email to you, and I'll bring it to the next meeting to show how we're tracking the north, the south, and the landfill. And that's one thing I'd like to even, uh, report here, is that the, the tracker and the reporter is not just for road issues, it can also be used for landfill. So your tire sites that you find and people dumping mattresses and couches, we're also going to track those and those locations, cause what we're, would like to do, and what I'm working on, and I know I use the word blitz a lot, I'd like to work on a partnership with the city of Carlsbad and Artesia, as well as with the commission to do a, uh, grappler blitz and go out to some of these dumping sites and really pick up some of these problem areas that we've discovered and located and identified.
Terrific. We need to do that. I was driving down Thomason Road today, and there's a set of tires and wheels sitting on the side of the road. Just sitting on the side of the road.
And one thing that we're gonna, we're in project updates, I don't know if I can do this. One thing that we're gonna bring to you and present to you here soon enough is that we'd like to purchase a grappler truck. So, we'll, uh, bring that to you and, and see what we can do with the county.
I'm sorry, I get excited about trash.
Apparently.
So... Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Good job. Sheesh.
That was great. I love that.
Mr. Chairman, next we have the travel request consent agenda. If any item needs to be reported, um, I ask that you pull up for discussion, otherwise we just need a motion and a second.
I'd like to go out of C.
All right. I look for a motion to approve travel requen, travel request consent agenda, pulling item C.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Crockett?
Oh, yes.
I'm in blood, I'm sorry. You're leaning back.
Kinda getting that.
If I can't see you, I don't call you.
You looked at me and I was like, I don't think you said that.
It's not my turn yet. Yes.
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes. Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
No way, I couldn't see him.
Oh, sorry.
She got us all.
All right.
Um, I, I'm just wondering, EBT, what, what do we have here? Where do they normally go for training?
So, yeah, that's where the, that's the, it's the joint between Pierce, E1, Rosenbauer, all of them basically, they're in there.
Okay. So that's a standard cross, cross-the-board, there's no class and raws or anything like that we go to? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, I make motion we approve item C of the travel request agenda in the future.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Ketchen?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item is emergency business. We have no emergency business. We have no legislative updates. Next are legislators, elected officials, and county department heads, comments, announcements, and updates.
We received, uh, a letter from Taxon, oh, actually, it came from DFA to Taxon Brown saying that we're not gonna get our rates until the week of September thirteenth. Because they, their comment was, um, due to a recertification of oil and gas assessed values received today on the thirtieth, DFA has been granted an extension to issue the tax year 2019 property tax certificates till September thirteenth, from September the first. So instead of having an extra meeting probably this week, uh, it's probably gonna be the week of the twenty-third. Rhonda's gonna be out the whole week. Rhonda and Melissa are gonna be in class all the week of the sixteenth anyway, but, so, probably the week of the twenty-third for the extra meeting. I know, it just makes y'all so happy. So, just informative. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, announcement? Okay, seeing that there isn't none. Next is interim co-county managers, comments, announcements, and updates. Do you have anything else?
Good morning.
Chairman and Commissioners, last week I met with, uh, Stan Tech, NMDOT, and BNSF, and Stan Tech's gonna keep moving forward on their planning portion of thirty-one and two eighty-five. They, Stan Tech also has an on-call with NMDOT, and so they're gonna go ahead and hire them to do some design on the realignment of that intersection and also put in some interim alternative traffic lights.
Nice.
And they're gonna go ahead and pay for that until we get the main plan on the intersection completed and go to construction lines, so. That was really good news. I think the residents down there will be very happy with it, cause they've always brought that up, and the traffic studies out, or I was told anyways, that the traffic studies never, wouldn't let a traffic light work there at that intersection. And talking to Michael Smelker, they did some other studies, and he thinks it'll work, so they're gonna go ahead and move forward with that.
Good.
The meeting that I had with BNSF, um, prior to this, BNSF would not get on board with the project. They didn't really support it. After that meeting with them, they're on board now. They want, they wanna get rid of that at-risk crossing if possible, and they'll have funding to go towards the project during construction.
Thank you, Esquith. That's good news.
I just have a couple of things. I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome to our, uh, new county manager, Al Davis. So I, I look forward to work with you, and I think all of us do, so, welcome.
Thank you.
Lastly, I just wanted to say, go Cape'n. There might have been an email that was sent out saying, wear blue today, but... Hey, we had to.
Artesian wore blue. I'm a little upset. Come on, man.
It's a little blue. I lived here longer than I did, Artesian. Just trying to get back in it.
Next, your county commissioners, comments, announcements, and updates.
It is two, I guess it was the twenty-second. We had an illegal dumping forum, and I just wanna say thank you for all of the county employees that attended that, and, um, Fabian got recognized a lot as one of the premier landfills in the state, and that was really cool. And Fabian and I, Fabian and I are really hoping that we get that tire shredder before Doniana County, so we can have the first locally-owned tire shredder in the state. Just throwing that out there. But, anyway, there was a lot of great things, um, that were mentioned in the illegal dumping forum, but one thing that Doniana County has is a reporting mechanism, um, for illegal dumping, and it goes through like GIS coordinates. So, I think that that's something over the next few months that we might be exploring with the city of Carlsbad to use that. Um, basically, you can pinpoint it down to the exact location and, um, be able to, you know, if there's five thousand tires out there, you can, somebody can take a picture and that picture automatically uploads, and then you can get the coordinates to it. So it was a pretty cool reporting tool, um, and they're willing to work with us and give us, um, all of their information at no charge, so we're gonna be trying to figure that out over the next few months, working with the city of Carlsbad.
So, we, we have had some of those, uh, shootings that have taken place over the last little while. I'll make sure that we're prepared at the county. I was hoping the sheriff would be here today. I don't know if he's done some training or anything like that for, for county employees that is, that's taken place. I wanna make sure that we're up to date and we know what to do if, if a tragedy like that was to befall our community. Um, you know, we've got great law enforcement, but, you know, law enforcement isn't always, isn't always right there, so I wanna make sure that we're prepared on that. Old Loco Road, um, we have, it's been recently completed, and there are potholes everywhere. It's just falling apart, and I think, uh, Burns, Jason Burns knows all about that back there, so I wanna make sure that we're taking care of that. And on another kind of vein of levity, but also quite serious, I got code enforcement called on me. So, I had stacked a bunch of concrete blocks out by the road, and nobody could see, and I just wanted to appreciate, uh, I wanna appreciate code enforcement for going out there and doing that. I think that it is, and, and I know that it's kinda joking, but, but I, I really do appreciate, um, you know, especially elected officials being held to the same, to the same, uh, uh, what do you call it? Standards. Thank you, to the same standards as everybody else, and I do appreciate code enforcement for going out there and doing their job. You guys are doing a great job, so, um, I moved the blocks. I am in, I'm in code now, so, but I do, I do appreciate that and do appreciate people holding, uh, holding elected officials accountable, so. But that is all I have. I'd like to welcome Al Davis here. Looking forward to working with Al, and, uh, so I think he'll be a, a great addition to the county.
Commissioner Wood?
I don't have.
Commissioner Carl?
I'm glad Al's here today, because I've been getting about fifty thousand calls on noise from drilling going... drilling going on in residential areas. And I don't know if we have the ability to require some type of noise abatement, but I would love the fact if we could address that, maybe with some of the oil and gas companies that are drilling in and around our residential areas. Because, you know, after about three nights of not getting any sleep, they're pretty rough to deal with. And so, I would like to kinda address that. And it even gets louder when they start fracking. And so, it's a, you know, it's a real problem. And people with kids, when all the trucks start pulling in and parking in the bar ditches and other cars are passing, gets a little dangerous. So, if we could maybe address some of that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick things. Obviously, with the vice president here recently for the USMCA, it's a rework of the NAFTA. That agreement actually really does, affects quite a few things in our county. I mean, it's huge on agriculture, huge on dairy, big on oil and gas, all of which I wanted to take a look to make sure I wasn't wrong, but they're all on this little thing. So, I know Doniana has already come up with a resolution in support of it. I've sent that resolution to CAS. I'd like to look at it, and Lee County's working at it, putting some kind of resolution in support of it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We can bring that to a meeting maybe soon and see how we think, what we think about that. It just, it does a whole bunch for our county and I think it would make sense for us to go one way or the other. Also, I was approached, it was kinda weird, and I think they called y'all, but a group wanting me to sign a document for a census deal with the, I don't know. So, hopefully they got hold of y'all. I said there was no chance I'm signing it until at least y'all look at it. They were kinda surprised I hadn't even seen it. But I think the same thing happened with Artesia. So, there's a census deal out there where they're wanting to sign on, it's a, it has to do with PSP, I believe, or something along those lines. So, hopefully y'all will see that soon. That'll be something that might come in front of the commission soon. There was a ballgame a couple of weeks ago, too big to admit, it didn't go quite the way I wanted. But I am glad to see all the Cape'n fans today. Yeah, CAS was so kind to give me one. I don't, sorry. I don't see myself wearing that, but I do appreciate the gesture, it was very kind of you. I have at least one more year here, so hopefully I'll be able to bring some orange next year. I don't know. No, it was a good game. Kids look great both sides and I really love to see the competition, I love to see, I thought it went well this year. I was really proud of both sets of fans. I think everyone just had fun, which is what you're supposed to do to ballgame. Root for your team, the team that wins, you show up at a meeting with their color and y'all did great at that, congratulations. So, but no, I hope that we all do well. I know we did good the next week, y'all didn't quite pull the next week off, but hopefully the rest of the season goes better so that we can really show Eddie County for what it is and its great competitiveness. I look forward to it. So, I did see some of y'all at the game, I just, you know, got a little ways into it, I didn't really wanna talk to y'all, so... Sorry, I'm gonna get off, is what it is. No, thank y'all for everything. And thanks to Jason, I know I've called quite a few times and you've got, especially that bittersweet, different things like that, road crews all over it, so, y'all keep it up, everybody seems to be doing a great job, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have executive session.
Al say something, it's not on the agenda, but... CAS, do we have Al say something?
Sure, he could say something.
If y'all want, before we jump into executive session...
Wait, wait, wait.
You know, not to put Al on the spot, but if you'd like to say something, if you wanna, whatever, we're glad to have you. And apparently Commissioner Carlson needs you to have a phone like today, so, you can start taking those 50,000 calls. But if you'd like to say something, we'd love to...
I appreciate the opportunity. I've been working with not only the commission but the county staff, the county employees. I think there's an opportunity to continue the progress and development of what Eddie County is capable of being. And I think I can leverage my past experience and my career in oil and gas to contribute to that progress. And so, I look forward to working with everyone here. It's gonna take me a little bit of time to get my feet on the ground and meet with various department heads and groups and individuals as well as the commissioner to understand how the processes are working, how they're intended to work, and things we can do to help be as efficient and effective as we'd like to be. So, I think there are a lot of great things ahead for Eddie County. And I hope that being here, I can contribute to that, to that momentum and progress. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
How long?
We have executive session. The board may go into executive session in accordance with the State and New Mexico Open Meetings Act, Section 10151 H2 and 7, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, which are county management personnel, and threatened or pending litigation, stand pipe phase two project.
Realistically.
Realistically?
Yeah. I wanna give a better time. Not 30 minutes and two hours later.
Tell the truth. I don't know how much you guys are gonna wanna talk.
Standpipe...
12:30?
30 to 40 minutes, standpipe.
We could put an hour on it.
At least be an hour.
12:30?
That's the case. So, 12:30.
One o'clock?
12:30.
I just need a motion and a second to go into it.
So, move.
Please call for the vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Would you guys like to do the limited personnel matters first or standpipe?
Does it matter, Bernard, if you're with the turnin' loose? Yeah, I think so. Probably oughta be in here now. He started today, we just...